Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Montemoy Regional School District, Montemoy Regional School Committee meeting for Thursday, May 13th. It is 6:31 PM. This meeting is being held partially remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A, Section 20. We're going to do a roll call to order since we are partially remote. When I say your name, please say your full name and present. We're going to start in the Zoom room with Joe.
Good evening. Joseph Ossielo, present.
Thank you. Sharon?
Hi. Sean Stout, present.
Thank you. Jackie?
Jacque Lindsay-Bet Long, present.
Thank you. Meredith?
Meredith Henderson, present.
Thank you. Nancy?
Nancy Scott, present.
Thank you. Terry?
Terry Russell, present.
Thank you. And Tina Games, present. And I don't believe we have Joanne with us. Joanne Sheehan? I think she's coming in remotely, so we'll keep an eye out for Joanne. So we're going to move into the next item of business, which is the approval of minutes, the April 29th minutes. So if we could have a motion to approve, please.
I would move that we approve the school committee minutes.
Thank you, Terry. A second?
Second.
Meredith has seconded. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, we're going to take a roll call vote to accept the April 29th meeting minutes, starting with Joe.
I to be approval of minutes.
Thank you. Sharon?
Aye.
Thank you. Jackie?
Abstain.
Oh, thank you, Jackie. Meredith?
Aye.
Thank you. Nancy?
Abstain.
Thank you. Terry?
Aye.
And Tina is an aye. Tina Games. All right. Moving on to public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Additional time at the discretion of the Chair. Anyone for public comment this evening? Charles. Charles Gruska, go ahead. And your camera has gone off, Charles. There you go. And you're off again. And you'll just need to unmute yourself.
Wow. Charles Gruska, 6 T-Berry Ave, Harwich. I just wanted to share a couple of additional thoughts in support of the unanimous recommendation of the administration that a pre-K to two and three to four school reconfiguration will be the best configuration for the education of the elementary students in the district. And some thoughts beyond that I've had since the forum last week. One of the best predictors of educational success and positive life outcomes is being able to read at grade level by the end of second grade. That is such a strong indicator that some states use third-grade reading scores to predict future prison-bed needs. It's an eye-opener to me when I found that out. Therefore, grades pre-K to two are considered by many, including myself, to be the most important grades of all education. The main academic goal for grades pre-K to two should be ensuring that every student is reading at grade level by the end of grade two. That is where the key to closing the achievement gap actually occurs and actually should be sought. I just think configuring a pre-K to two school that puts all of the district's students and teachers that are in the most critical grades of all under one roof, under one administration, that can be laser-focused, directing all the school's energies towards that critical goal, most important goal, academic goal of the entire school career of a student, getting to be able to read at grade level by the end of second grade. That's the configuration that I see as the most power to be able to do that. And we had a meeting this week with Chatham Harwich. Newcomer, the new member of the club, was a presenter, and she has had a lot to do with the production of Sesame Street, 321 Contact, many other children's television programs. She also reminded us of the important data that the most, that 90% of brain development occurs between birth and age five. And that tells me that not only is preschool the beginning of learning to read, but birth is the beginning of learning to read. As a former preschool principal, I can tell you that many students come in to preschool well behind, and we don't catch them up. Research has shown that there can be a range of up to 35 million words in vocabulary that some students have heard beyond other students by age four. Thirty-five million. That puts a lot of students well behind. Vocabulary is called the skill of skills, and we're the best predictor of reading achievement, and reading achievement's the best predictor of total academic achievement. I think by putting all of grades K to two together frees up the administration from a lot of those other things that are taking place beyond grades three and up, MCAS, et cetera, to totally focus the entire school on that one critical academic skill. And it also frees up to work more closely with the community. People like Lucy Gilmore was doing some of the most important work in the district through the Family Resource Center to reach out to those who are involved with young children from birth and their families and provide a coordinated effort so that kids come to preschool and not behind. So that, I see that as a very powerful reason for consolidating pre-K to two under one roof, one administration. The second I've been thinking about, as I said, put ourselves in the role of the student, in the shoes of the student. I didn't even think until after the forum last week. Next morning, I woke up realizing I went to school in K to eight in a school that had one section with one teacher for nine years. My experience of school, I didn't have difficulties academically. My experience of school really varied from year to year. And reflecting on it, it was really the relationship with the teacher, the teacher's personality, style, my style meeting the teacher, what made the difference between the joy of going to school and the years when outside of recess and lunch, school was something to be avoided. My brother, who was a grade behind me throughout all of our school careers, because there was very little turnover, had the same teachers almost always as I did. He will tell you to this day, and he's about to turn age 70, he'll tell you that he always had the perception that he was in the shadow of me and that his teacher really saw him as my brother rather than he as an individual. And that always sticks with me when he shares that with me. I went from that school, and now we're talking about transition beyond one teacher. I went to a high school, a diocesan high school of 2,800 students, coming out of a school where we were one grade, one class per grade level. I had only one student that I knew from my grammar school days in class with me. And again, I did well academically, but that entire ninth grade, every day going to school, I had butterflies. And they got worse as the school bus got closer to the school. And by 10th grade, I was over it, but it was a very difficult transition. And so I put myself in the shoes of Chatham elementary kids. I just think it's so much better for everybody to come together right at the beginning of their school year. I think it's a disadvantage at times for Chatham students to go up to the middle school, whereas the predominance of students are from Harwich who have already made their friendship groups. And I think of my own, like trying to put myself in the, now, it's not all students, but how many are there that could be in those shoes? And are they not sharing those kinds of concerns with their parents? My parents never knew that of the butterflies that I was experiencing. So I feel very strongly that it would be the benefit of Chatham students to begin all together with the Harwich students and make the transitions that they're going to make in their school careers together. And those are two additional reasons that I continue to strongly support the recommendation to reconfigure the schools in the best interests of students and for that reason only. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Charles. I appreciate it. All right. We're going to move into reports and discussions. And unless there is objection, we're going to just move a few items. We're going to just move an order here. We're going to start with the Montemoy Regional High School Program of Studies, followed by graduation plans, and then the May 6th Community Forum. Is there any objection? All right. Seeing none, we are going to move into the Montemoy Regional High School Program of Studies. Ms. Police, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Jen Police, proud principal, Montemoy Regional High School. I'm joined tonight by our instructional leaders, who are, other than Mary, who's here with me tonight, they are in the Zoom room. And we didn't have a lot to do this year, so we thought we would just overhaul the program of studies. We're going to give you the drag-by version, though. And we think that you'll find that this is reflective of our student body, and we have done a great job of providing more opportunities for students by removing the obstacles and barriers that typically prevent student learning. So with our first slide, I think it's the Visual and Performing Arts Department. Amanda Sherman.
Hello, everybody. Amanda Sherman, VPA Department Head. And we have made a lot of changes this year. And this is our new Program of Studies map for our department. And it basically outlines the major changes and also the various tracks that we've developed this year. And I can kind of explain those tracks and the changes a little bit more thoroughly on the next slide, if we can go to that one. So the big changes that we created this year, we kind of looked over our Program of Studies and found where we're having barriers, where students are struggling, and ways to best serve them. So the first thing that we changed and we decided unanimously was to take away our Foundations of Art and Digital Media courses. Originally, we had the best intentions for this to be an eighth-grade theater class, where we would give students opportunity to try a taste of all different types of arts as a prerequisite to go to upper-level classes. However, after discussion and some research, we discovered that it was creating a bottleneck in our Program of Studies. We had to collectively teach more Foundations classes and less upper-level classes to meet the demand. So it wasn't serving our population the way that we intended, so we got rid of that. The second major change was creating Visual Performing Arts tracks, which were in the last slide. So we have a 2D track, a 3D track, a digital media track with more film, digital art and design, and performing arts. So what's great with that is we're all playing to each other's strengths. Each person in the department is really passionate about what they're teaching, and we're going to dive right into, you know, less of the foundational, but more diving right into the content in a more rigorous fashion. So that's exciting for everybody. Number three is, we have a total now of 11 Level One non-prerequisite courses for all grades. So what happened when we had the Foundations of Digital Media and Art prerequisites? It was, everyone had to start there in order to move forward, and now we have 11 starting places. So we have, we're going to have a lot more opportunities for kids. And the Guidance Department will thank us, because I know that was a big issue with scheduling. Number four is, we have one independent study offering with three different concentration areas. In the past, we had all these different kind of honors classes, advanced classes. It was just kind of muddy, so we ended up just simplifying it. So students who are very independent, maybe after they've done AP and every other class that we offer, it's for those kids who are excelling. And then number five is, we have been doing this for some time, but we wanted to put it in words. So some of the courses can be taken two times with instructor permission. So essentially, an invested art student who takes a photo, an advanced photography class once, is going to treat it differently the second time they take it, because the content and their concentrations will advance along with them. So what's great is with the advanced-level classes, students can, with recommendation, take them multiple times, which also helps with scheduling. So those are some of the major changes that we've created, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Any questions? Nancy?
I don't have a question. I have a comment to say that I love it. I love the fact that it's more flexible for the kids to get into what they want to. So thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody in the Zoom room, if you have a question, just say your name. All right. Amanda, my one question with students, with the, I guess students can take courses more than once. So looking at performing arts, so theater arts, if I were to take that twice, am I going to have a different experience? I would assume different plays, things like that?
Absolutely. So right now, first, a theater class, if you take it twice, the theater curriculum can change dramatically from one to the next, not just with who's in the class, but what types of activities, what types of plays. So it's going to be really open. And especially, like, for example, with the advanced photography, because I've done this, some kids have taken advanced photography with me three times. And every, they might get a similar project, but the way that they tackle it is completely different. So when it's like a personal, independent concentration, they can either, I can give them advanced prompts, or they can take it in their own direction and do even better than the first time. So it's kind of what they make of it a lot of times.
Okay.
Especially project-based learning.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right.
You're welcome.
I think we're next. Yep. Anybody else? I think we're good.
So I think next, we have John Anderson, Instructional Leader for History and Social Sciences.
Thanks. So for the History Department, we can start off with that top grid there. And that really displays our core graduation classes. There's one new class, and the other red cells really show some new flexibility built into the schedule. So the one new class that you see there is AP European History. It'll be offered next year to 10th graders through 12th graders. This is a continuation of our ninth-grade World History curriculum. So it acts as an additional opportunity to get a more complete and advanced picture of European history. So basically, in that two-year sequence, you'll get from the Renaissance to the Enlightenment, and then the French Revolution to the Cuban Missile Crisis. So that's the one new class. The other red cells really represent the changes in the honors in the AP that allow for flexibility of what year you take a class. So I think a great example of that is the AP Government, which was traditionally a 12th grade class, but now will be offered 9 through 12. And the rationale behind that was, now that every student takes Government in eighth grade, we feel like they will be prepared to take AP Gov. 9 through 12. This also allows, if you notice, prior to these changes, AP was only offered in history in the 11th grade and 12th grade, and now there's AP offerings 9 through 12, which is a great change. The other changes are reflected below the grid, and these are half-year electives. So the first one is Caribbean, Black, and Latin American history. This links, this is directly linked to the district's emphasis on equity and a strategic plan. This is really a student-led course, so by including history tied to cultures represented on Cape Cod, the course will be more relevant to students' experiences and their family lineage. So it's really meant to be a student-led course in that respect. The next one is History of Food. This course uses food as an entry point for students to explore world history, cultural history, and globalization. It's really a human geography class, but with a theme of food. I know the instructor is super excited to teach it that way, and it's to get the kids really energetic about it, but it really is a human geography class. Next one is History of Medicine. The History of Medicine helps students to discover a personal meaning in their biological sciences and to discover careers in the medical field. So this is kind of looking at the medical field and medicine in general more through the lens of history. And the last one is Turning Points in Global History. So this class inspects the big what-ifs of history. It's a deep dive into the key turning points of history and how the world would be vastly changed if the outcomes had been different. So for example, some of these big changes or turning points that could have really led to a different world are things like if the Nazis had won World War II, or if the Greeks hadn't taken their big stand at the Battle of Thermopylae, or if the Chinese had used their naval power during imperialism instead of Europeans kind of having their takeover in imperialism. So those big what-ifs, and how that will translate into the future as well. So those are our changes for this year.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Meredith?
I do have a question. I was actually just talking about this today. So where it says graduation requirements, but then there's all these options for advanced placement and honors, and then these new electives, can some of those different options, like, for instance, replace the US history? Or do you, like, is there flexibility? Or?
That's a great question. Yeah. So we've really looked into this, so that the students will still definitely need for the three-year requirement, World History, US I, and US II. So these would all be in addition to that, but that really goes along with the state requirement of World History, US I, and US II.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Nancy?
I just was wondering if the electives are open to all grades, or is there a limitation?
Yeah. Another great question. So in the past, we hadn't been as flexible, but just like what we did with that top grid, almost all of them are open to 9 through 12, and many of them are 8 through 12.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Joe, go ahead.
Doing a little sound adjustment. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question. I'm not sure if it's a great question or even a good one, but I'll ask it anyway. On the advanced placement course offerings for grades 11 and 12, four courses are listed, and I just may not have caught an explanation. Surely, we're too small to offer four courses every year. I'm assuming that these are listed as possibilities which the staff feels capable and even enthusiastic to teach, and then student interest will determine what is actually run. I'm thinking that's the case. If not, some clarification. And then the next point is, compare, I would ask anybody in here or in the public, compare these course offerings to about 10 years ago. If you have any question about the value of regionalization, it's right here on this page and the other pages that we have seen tonight and will be seeing in the next few minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Terry, go ahead.
Can't resist it, John, former student.
Yes, absolutely.
Say hi to Jimmy for me.
I will, without a doubt.
Now my question.
Okay.
Joe mentioned 10 years ago, back in the day. Walk me quickly through a typical social studies history teacher's schedule on a four-block day or five. And attached that is, how do they move towards volunteering or whatever, assigning some of these electives?
So you, so.
I assume that was not a good question.
What are, just a normal day would look like in this year, in the current year?
Well, I don't know about this year. It may not be that regular, but, you know, back when we were full-time in a variety of ways. I guess what I'm looking at is the challenge of adding excellent, I wish I were back as a kid, electives to a program years ago at Howard Child. I just didn't have the staffing. If a teacher typically had four sections or five sections, would they have three preparations? Would they have?
Got it. Yeah. No, that makes sense. Yeah. So, I mean, I can speak from my course load, my typical course load of, I'll teach four classes that are World History, College Prep, Honors. And then a few years back, Mr. Carpenter really asked us to teach what our passions were. And prior to becoming a teacher, I worked at Fidelity Investments. I was a stockbroker. So I created a global investing class. So that's an additional prep. And it, from those first classes that Mr. Carpenter had us create, the kids can see the excitement in the teacher, and it just elevates the class. So that's where all these new electives came from, is just really excited teachers to teach what they're passionate about.
Thanks, John.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions? I just want to make a comment. I, these electives, I agree with Terry. Gosh, I wish I was back in school, especially the Turning Points in Global History what-if. I just think that is absolutely fantastic, and it gives our kids so many wonderful opportunities, and I just love it. And John, my son took your global investing class, and it was fabulous.
Yes, he did.
He did.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on?
Yep. I think we're moving on to ELA, and we have Zach Gill with us tonight in the Zoom room.
Hello, everyone. I'm Zach Gill. I'm one of the co-department heads of English. So over the last two years, the ELA department has really been working on kind of two main goals in terms of our curriculum and the Program of Studies, and that's to kind of diversify the classes and texts that we teach, both for, to better represent our student population and to appeal to their interests and kind of passions more. And the other aspect has been really focusing on kind of the foundational skills that are really important for students to have in reading, writing, and speaking, both for MCAS, but then also for, obviously, life beyond high school. So the changes we've made last year and this year kind of, I've worked to reflect that a little bit. So if you see in the grid, in English, like in math, there's four years required of core classes. And so that's what the top, the grid represents there. And the choices for students in eighth through 11th grade is really just a matter of, do they want to take College Prep or Honors? In 11th grade, they have the additional choice of AP English Language and Composition, which is a nonfiction argument rhetoric-based class. The big change really came in senior year, where students in previous years, students took a full year of British literature, which they could take as either an honors or a College Prep credit, or they could take AP English Literature. And we were getting a lot of feedback from students that they weren't, that they were looking for more choice there, and that a lot of them weren't necessarily all that interested in kind of a survey course in British literature. And so since they have, by senior year, students have, you know, most of them have passed the MCAS, and they've basically fulfilled their requirements, we decided to semesterize the senior year options. And so they still, first semester, they still have the choice between either taking British literature, College Prep or Honors level, taking AP Literature and Composition. And then we also created a World Literature class that was also to help out the Global Studies degree program, in that students need an English course. And so this was, of course, specifically designed to fulfill that need. And so that's a semester. They have to take one of those as part of their requirement. And then second semester, we surveyed the students in terms of their interest, and we created a whole bunch of ideas for classes that we thought they might like, and took a survey. And the ones that they indicated were the most interesting to them were creative nonfiction, so looking at nonfiction novels like In Cold Blood, contemporary fiction. so looking at nonfiction novels like In Cold Blood, contemporary fiction, looking at books in the last, you know, 10 to 15 years, dystopian fiction, so really capitalizing on the last 20 or so years of the post-Hunger Games obsession with dystopian, and then sports in literature and film, which is not surprisingly probably the most popular one so far. No, those are core classes, so they are still treated as a core English requirement in which that students will still be doing a research essay, reading at the level that you would expect at the core level. But they're, they're a single letter leveled. It's just all of a college prep option for them. So this, this year is the first year we have run that and students seem to be really enjoying the choices they've taken. We had more students sign up for world literature than British Literature, which is what we expected. And then we have a pretty good spread in, in those four classes there for senior year. The other big change that we did was as a way to kind of, again, continue to appeal to student interest more as well as to try to get more students to take ELA electives and work on their reading and writing skills. We added additional electives to our program of studies that were focused on, again, classes that we thought students would enjoy. Because they're electives, they're not core requirements, so they can be, you know, more focused on enjoyment and less rigorous. Obviously, still high expectations. So what you see there, we've divided it into two categories. There's the classes on the left column that will run next year and the classes on the right column that will run, that will be offered, I should say, the following year. And similar to history, just because there's nine electives listed there doesn't mean that nine electives are going to run. In fact, we, we can't run nine electives, but it's based on student interest mostly. And this is a test year, so we'll see, we'll probably end up pairing some of this down as we go. The first class you see there, that's English Foundations. This was a class that we worked with Ms. Police on creating to really help those students who, who kind of fall in the, between the cracks for MCAS, so students who don't have IEPs, who aren't ELA learners, but still struggle with, for various reasons, with their English skills. So students who, for various reasons, have a lower than grade average reading level, but don't qualify for extra help. And it's a class that's designed to supplement their English class. It doesn't replace a core English class. It's not a remedial English class. It's just purely designed to really push those eight through 10 students towards building on their MCAS skills. All the other ones are kind of represent, again, as, as John said, some of our passions. So we have creative writing in there. We have journalism, an introduction to acting class, a graphic novel class, based on things that we English teachers like and that we thought students would as well. And so this will be the first year to see our, what we get from that. I think that's about it.
Wonderful, thank you. Questions for Zach? Nancy, go ahead.
I, quick question to make sure I understand. So seniors have to choose one of those four for a second semester? They can't choose another elective instead of one of those four, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody in the Zoom room? Joe, go ahead.
Okay, I did lose you guys for a while. Am I coming in all right now?
Yes, beautifully.
Wonderful. Is there any idea, let's see, do I say Dr. Gill?
Ms. Zach is fine.
Dr. Zach Gill. Just a couple of things. So for the world literature, any sense of, any sense yet of what the readings will be? A lot of the course descriptions include, you know, books read will include, but are not limited to that kind of language. I'm not sure what the world literature would try to do. Second, does the global studies teacher have any input on determining the reading selections in that class? And then a slightly more whimsical question. If you were teaching grade 10, what would you teach? So far, the things listed there, everything is mental illness and death and, you know, important subjects in the world, but it's a little, it's a little tough for grade 10. And I, I focus on grade 10 because in many schools, English teaching schools throughout the world, actually, nobody ever really knows what to do with grade 10. You know, grade nine is pretty simple. You know, we're introducing. Grades 11 and 12, well, you got to have American Lit in there somewhere. And grade 12 is, what, what Montemoy does is very much right in the mainstream, including the branching to world literature. But grade 10 seems to have stymied some of the finest minds in education, and I'm going to assume that includes yours. I'm listening, I'll go mute and listen in.
Good, so that's a, a point that is relevant to a lot of our discussions lately. For the world literature, this year, it kind of covered, because it's a semester, there's only so much in terms of world literature that can be covered. And so they did some choice where the students were able to choose a little bit. They did parts selections from Gilgamesh. They did the kite runner. And they did a play, but it's escaping me which one at the moment where, so I think, and I think since this was our first year teaching semester classes, there's definitely a little bit of adjustments we'll be working on over the summer in terms of what we really want to cover in a semester class, because obviously it can't be a survey class. And so a more thematic approach is our, is our way to do that. And I should also say, we, we created some of the electives to also satisfy some of the global studies requirements. So if you look, creative writing two has been changed to be a, to be a globally focused course, so looking at creative writing from around the world and using that as inspiration and journalism as well. So to make it a more, instead of being specifically about American journalism, more focused on global issues and global journalism. Mr. Dixon works with, works with us in the, for the global studies requirements, but he doesn't, he hasn't asked to have any specific input on the titles beyond that they shouldn't be British Literature or American Literature. But if he, if he, if he did, he'd be welcome to. As for the 10th grade question, one of the, one of our big conversations that we've been working with, with Mark Smith and as well as in our department is, you know, the idea of, of the canon versus, versus kind of a more of a skill focus. So is there a certain set of books that students need to have read in order to be, you know, participants in a global society? Or is it more about having certain skills that they have so that they can, so they can tackle any text and, and learn what texts are really, they can be passionate about? And that's, that's where we're moving more towards. 10th grade, as, as you said, has always kind of been a, a catch-all to a certain extent in terms of the text that we've read and we're working on going through each year's curriculum and, and focusing in a little bit more. And so we've done ninth grade and we've done 11th grade and worked on diversifying the texts a little bit more to represent more of our students and to kind of link them a bit more thematically. We haven't gotten to 10th grade yet, but that is definitely in our sights to kind of think about what it is we want 10th grade to be. If that answers the question a little bit.
Good, okay, wonderful. Anybody else? Zach, before you go, I just had a couple of questions. So under electives, 20, 21, 22, so you have introduction to acting. How is that different than what was over in the theater department, theater arts? Is that more, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to step on, on the theater arts toes. This represents more of the fact that right now, as our program stands, the, the acting, the, the teachers with acting and directing experience are in the English department. With Deb having retired, that position hasn't, the, the, the sort of head of the theater program hasn't really been replaced. So Rachel Barnes ran, directed the show this year. I have an experience, I have experience teaching Stanislavski Method Acting. Alexa Goyette, who's our, our new hire from this past year, is also, has a lot of experience running theater programs. So in the past, our school hasn't really, Deb would always be the first to admit that she was more of a tech theater person than an acting theater person. And so we haven't really had a, kind of a, a more of an acting approach and the students have really been interested in, in improving their acting. And so it's kind of an attempt to fill that need, which English departments often kind of do overlap with, with visual performing arts in that way.
Okay, thank you for that. And I guess if I were somebody who was into that or wanted to take that, it looks like my one shot is next year because it's not over in the 20, 22, 23 electives. So am I understanding that, because it changes so drastically, the two lists?
Yeah, so some of that is our attempt to, to try to balance classes. And so we tried to sort of match them with sort of their opposites. If there was a lot of interest in introducing to action, acting, or if there is interest perhaps in like an acting, an advanced acting class, I think we could certainly, you know, there's no reason we couldn't offer that in 20, 22, 23. Basically, what happened honestly is that we created a lot of classes that we all really wanted to run and knew that we had to split them over the course of two years, as well as that there were certain classes we already offered that were, that needed to take a year or two off in terms of like, we already had so many students that have taken Creative Writing One, that it was, we weren't getting the kind of enrollment that we needed. So we figured if it took a year or two off, then we could, it would, it would build back that enrollment a little bit.
Okay, thank you. And I am familiar with your theater arts background, so I'm glad you're there. Thank you so much. All right, moving on.
Okay, we are moving on to Mary Hemian, mathematics instructional leader.
Hello, hello, thank you for having me. I just wanted to highlight, I know you have a few extra slides in your packet. I did put the vision statement of the math department in there. You can find that in the program of studies. There are no changes to that, but I thought it was important that you see that. I'm not going to read it to you, but we do want to turn out students, you know, who are critical thinkers, problem solvers. So anyway, that's the vision statement. The changes that we are making for next year, a couple of small ones. We have some name changes going on in a few courses. And, and then we have a, a new Algebra One honors course that we're adding and we're bringing back a discrete math class. If you want to go to the next slide, I can talk about each of those individually. So grade eight algebra is the new name for what is currently our grade eight accelerated math class. The other thing that we're actually putting in here that is going to coincide with that, it's, it's not on this sheet. We're going to do the same thing with our current grade eight math. We're going to change that to pre-algebra. So the reason that we are renaming those courses is really to just kind of get some sort of vertical alignment between the middle school and the high school so that it makes for a really fluid transition for the students and the parents, quite frankly, when they're looking through programs of studies and they, you know, want to know what's next for their child. So there are no changes to the course content themselves, it's strictly the name change. And we're excited about this. This is a new course that we're bringing in. We are going to offer an Algebra One honors class for ninth graders that are ready for that. We, we feel like we're not serving a population of students coming out of grade eight that although we do put some of those students into our honors geometry class, some are just not ready for that big jump. But we want to have something there to challenge them coming out of grade eight, even if they can't quite make the jump to geometry honors. So we're adding in this Algebra One honors class and it will really go into depth. You'll, you'll find the descriptions if you look back into our program of studies at our traditional Algebra One class and compare it to our Algebra One honors. The content obviously is the same. We have to follow the Mass, the Massachusetts framework and the standards, but this will allow us to accelerate them a little bit and be able to dig deeper into those concepts. We can really stress being able to model things verbally, graphically, numerically and algebraically, which is a big, big piece of even what the students do through AP Calculus. The College Board expects them to be able to do that. So we're very excited to be offering that for our ninth graders next year. And then our statistics probability and discrete topics class was actually a class that existed at Chatham High School. And when we merged, it did become part of our program of studies. Kelly Torenzi taught it for the years that she was here. And then it just kind of faded out when she faded out. And I've been working with the senior population of students and Jen and I had some conversations about the need in that back. There are students right now that are taking AP Calculus that quite frankly are in a little bit over their head. And so we'd like to, we have a four-year math requirement. We follow the MasCor recommendations, so the students have to take four years of math. And we want to provide them with some choices. So this college prep statistics class will do that for them. It'll give them a nice challenging fourth year of math so that they get challenged, but they're not drowning in an AP class when they don't, you know, necessarily belong there. And then lastly, this is another name change. Currently, we offer a course called Advanced Topics in Mathematics. And I just was doing some thinking this year when Jen asked us to, you know, think about changes. And I decided to go digging into the framework again. And the state of Massachusetts in their curriculum specifically talks about advanced quantitative reasoning as an alternative to a pre-calculus class. So again, for some really strong seniors that maybe aren't quite at the AP Calculus level, but it will give them, again, a, a fourth year of math that provides a challenge. So we're changing, we're changing the name to really reflect what the framework is asking us to do. And that is what I have for changes.
Thank you very much. Anybody questions for math?
Questions for math?
Anybody in the Zoom room? Sharon, Joe, questions for math?
Okay.
None? Well, thank you for your.
Oh, Nancy, go ahead. I'll try not to be first for every time. So just a question about eighth grade to ninth grade. So if they, the Algebra honors for freshmen, would that be for students who take algebra as an eighth grader and aren't as successful, so they could repeat it, but still at an honors level? And also for students who are in eighth grade math, who are ready then to step into honors algebra as a freshman?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, I was hoping that was the case, but I wanted to ask.
Perfect.
And then my other, oh, I had another question. I, no, it wasn't. It was a comment of, I appreciate the, the changes of allowing or having some honors leveled courses that aren't AP. So it just, I, I appreciate those changes in there to not push for an AP stat as a senior, but to have a challenge still in there instead of just a college prep class. So I appreciate those, thank you.
You're welcome. We have some great kids, you know, in, in this school and it, it's been a pleasure teaching them and I'm looking forward to working with them hopefully for many years. So thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay.
Okay, I think next we have Ms. Carrie Flint, instructional leader for the Science, Technology and Engineering Department, and she's going to present her changes.
Hi, I'm Carrie Flint. We, some of the feedback that, that we have received in terms of our science courses over the last few years from our students is often that they don't the last few years from our students is often that they don't have enough time to take all of the electives that they would like to take. And as these discussions continue, it usually comes back to students saying that they would like to have more options available to them for science electives in grades nine and 10, so in the younger years. So next year, we will be offering a full-year environmental science elective. Environmental science is something we were unable to offer this year, partly due to a lack of interest with students in the upper grades. And because the elective for next year is being designed in such a way that biology will not be a prerequisite, this course will be offered to students specifically in grades nine and 10. So I'm personally really excited about this course. It's really going to focus on inquiry-based learning, where students will be able to use authentic problems as the context for a deeper investigation into environmental issues. So it's really going to be focused on project-based learning and problem-based learning. So we're really, really excited about that. Some other changes that we are making in our science program of studies is that we will be taking our existing semester-long anatomy electives and combining them into a full-year anatomy course for students in grades 11 through 12. We felt that this would allow for a little bit more flexibility to adjust the curriculum each year based on the interests of the students that are taking the course that year. You know, not being locked into just a select few body systems, but really being able to look at the body as a whole. And just being able to really make those connections between one body system and another and really understanding how they work together. And our last change that impacts our science program of studies has to do with our AP Physics C course. In the past, students were expected to take AP Physics One, which is an Algebra-based AP Physics course, prior to taking AP Physics C, which is a calculus-based course. We've now adjusted the prerequisites in order to allow students to choose to take AP Physics C without having AP Physics One first. However, obviously, the students would need to be enrolled in calculus at the time that they take AP Physics C. I think we'll move on to Tech and Engineering, which is on the next slide. I know that Larry Souza and Mark Smith have already presented to you about Project Lead the Way, but this is a program that will be providing new engineering pathways for our students. And some of the major changes that I'm just going to highlight that were made to our existing program of studies was to include the creation of a Grade Eight, Nine elective called Design and Build. And this will replace our current electives, Foundations of Technology, and Eighth Grade STEM. And we're essentially taking the best from both of those courses and really trying to streamline the course to create a distinctive pathway for students that are heading towards engineering. We'll also be offering a full-year Introduction to Engineering Design course. We will no longer be offering technological systems. However, because we have students that are already engaged in some of the engineering courses, we will continue to offer engineering to next year. Moving beyond that point, what we are really hoping is that in getting feedback from students that take our Design and Build course and the Introduction to Engineering Design course, that we will really be able to take their feedback to help guide the direction that our engineering program takes in the following years. And those courses that the students will choose from will come from the Project Lead the Way offerings that are there.
All right, thank you. Questions for science? Joe or Sharon, questions? I just have one question, because I can't seem to remember. So is, is biology the only required class?
Actually, right now, it's physics, because we test, we test in grade, grade nine.
Okay.
Physics, yeah. We, we shifted that after your children moved on.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay. All right, so physics is the only required one?
That's our tested subject, yep.
Okay, and then they can just pick?
We, we, we do ask our students to move through biology, because a lot of our electives are biology-based, which Carrie will be happy to share that with you. But as far as the tested subject, it is physics, but our sophomores do take biology.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Nancy?
Just to, to follow up, so every, for graduation requirements, they have to take physics, or that's the MCAS physics test?
The MCAS physics test is in grade nine, so our freshmen take intro to physics, and then they test in the ninth grade, where previously, we used to do Biology One in ninth grade, Biology Two in 10th grade, and then we tested in grade 10. So we wanted to diversify our science offerings, and we brought in physics four years ago, I think it is now? Does that sound right? I think it's, yeah, I think it's four years ago.
So they don't?
Chemistry is in grade 11.
Okay. So do you have a choice as a, as a district on what they test in, physics or bio?
We do.
And so you're choosing to test in physics and make that a grad requirement?
Correct.
And then they have to take two additional years?
Correct.
Okay.
Two additional years of laboratory science.
On top of physics?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that follow-up.
You got it. All right. Okay, next, I believe, is our World Language Changes and Revisions, presented to you by
Ms. Simmons, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you. If you want to come off mute, we think you might.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
I've been waiting so long, I think I forgot how to do this. All right.
That's all right.
We continue to offer four languages. It's a two-year requirement for graduation. We offer French, Spanish, Mandarin, and Latin. In the years to come, we'll continue to offer those four languages, and we start in eighth grade. Many of our students are taking Spanish One, Mandarin, Latin, and French in equal numbers, just about. It's pretty, pretty even across the board. And we encourage them to continue up to third year. Colleges like to see a student continue with one language beyond the requirement. And we do have some students who eventually make it in 12th grade to take an AP exam and try to achieve a three or higher grade. In the past two years, in the French department, in the Spanish department, we've been working on changing our curriculum to meet a more modern need that is based on global issues, such as immigration and human rights, and also being a global citizen. We started to change the way we grade our students as well, as students across the nation are becoming more skills-based. So our students are graded on reading and listening in the early years heavily, and as they get to higher levels, you increase the number of speaking and writing assessments, just like you would do in a natural progression of learning a, a language. It seems to be working better for the students. The new topics that we've chosen are a lot more interesting to the kids and a lot more realistic for them. Things that they might like listening to, music, video clips of movies that they might know. We watch silent movies, and then we come up with a language to go with them, and the kids are starting to speak more naturally on their own. So that's been really good, very encouraging. The new issue we're going to start working on is the Seal of Bilinguality. So we've already started to work on how is that going to work next year? We're looking into the requirements. Recently, the requirements for the Seal of Bilinguality have changed, and it's a little bit easier. A student would pass their MCAS exam at a certain level in English, and then they could take the AP exam in the second language, and if they achieve a, achieve a four or a five, they would be able to earn the Seal of Bilinguality. Now, this is something that many of the schools outside of Boston and in, in larger areas, more urban areas, have been doing for a few years. But now that the requirements have been changed and are a little bit more accessible to all students, we see that that will be actively pursued next year. So not too many changes in the names of the courses. It's mostly the content that we've been changing to make it more relative to what's going on in, in the world. And then also, I was going to add that, one more area here. Let me see. The frameworks. The state originally set out the original set of World Language Frameworks in 1999, and this year, in 2021, have adopted a new set of frameworks. So this new set of frameworks does require another look at our curriculum, as you're going to incorporate naturally the social, emotional learning component and also social justice component that blends in very well with this topic. So that'll be very exciting, I think, for our teachers to, to change lessons and make them more relevant to what's going on in our, in our global environment. So I welcome any questions you might have about the high school curriculum. We do miss having French from the middle school, but we were fortunate this year that a lot of students were interested in taking French as well. We were afraid that was going to die out at one point, and we still are a little bit nervous about that. A lot of our students come from families that have connections to Canada or to Europe, and they want to continue by learning French. Well, thank you for listening, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much. I agree with your comments about French. Nancy, go ahead.
I was just wondering if you could explain what the benefits are of the bilinguality achievement? I forgot the second word. Bilinguality certification?
Yeah, sure. It's called the Seal of Bilinguality, and this should really motivate some of our bilingual students to get recognition that they deserve and might not get in other areas. They might not be as proficient in math or science, but they have this natural ability to learn languages, and it's just a great way to help these students get the recognition that they deserve for having this gift of, of being bilingual.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I love that.
You're welcome.
Yep, Sharon?
I just have feedback on that. I do love the comments that you made about how you're trying to make things more interesting and relevant to the kids, because I don't know, of course, I was educated in the Dark Ages, but it was so boring. And to hear that it's becoming so much more interesting and exciting and relevant to the kids, that's really wonderful.
Yes, we've had a lot of good, positive feedback on the cultural lessons in French and in Spanish.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Sharon, you're in the light now, so I'm looking at the light coming into your office. Joe, did you have a question, comment? All right, well done. And I just echo what Sharon said. I love the social justice tie-in to this as well, so thank you very much.
No, you're welcome.
All right, so we're moving on to, I think, our last slide here, which is our, you know, over our drive-by presentation, right? So this is Caroline Freitas, Wellness Department.
Hi, I'm Caroline Freitas, and I lead up the Wellness Department, which includes physical education, health education, and culinary arts and nutrition, and I teach the culinary arts and nutrition classes. You can go ahead. We have two new offerings this year that we'd like to share with you. We're excited to share for our program of studies. It's a unified physical education class. It's a semester-long class, and it's being offered to grades 11 and 12. And we are trying to propose a co-teaching atmosphere where students of all abilities will be working together to improve themselves and the people that their students that they're working with. And it's going to be opportunities to socialize and to move and to work on your coordination, muscle strength, and endurance. And we're excited to try that for next year. And it's sort of on the heels of the Unified Track Offering that has really taken on some momentum this year and last at, at Montemay High School. So we're interested in trying that for next year, Unified PE. And then the other elective is CPR, AED, and First Aid Certification. And this is again for grades 11 and 12, and it will be a semester class. One of the highlights is that the students will be earning a certification, and we feel as though this is a nice offering for students to bring into the workplace. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions about wellness? Anyone? Sharon or Joe? I just have a, well, first of all, let me just say, I love the whole First Aid Certification, because I worked a couple of years ago with young adults and going into the workforce, and this is wonderful. So this, I guess it is an elective, right? So it can't be required?
Yes.
I think this is fantastic, and I'll be, and this is the first time?
Yes.
So it'll be interesting to see how many sign up for this, because this is, I'm really happy to see that we're offering this. And then I guess my question on that, for kids with disabilities, and I'm glad you covered the Unified, so if they wanted to take the First Aid Certification, I'm guessing there might be some adapting a little bit to the curriculum to support that perhaps, or is that too big of a question?
I'm not entirely sure that the First Aid Certification course is, that the curriculum is currently adapted yet. The, the course that Caroline was referring to is a physical education adapted or unified course?
Right.
Not, it's not relevant to the CPR yet.
Yeah, they're two different things.
Yeah. Well, and I, and that part I get. I just know that I personally know that there is an adaptive version of this. But, but it's not, okay.
It's two, it's two different certifications. So our teacher that got certified to do this did not do the adapted version yet.
All right, that's fine. Okay, thank you very much. Wonderful. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, good.
I think that's a wrap.
I think that's a wrap, everybody, and thank you very much. And thank you for the colorful slides.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for all your wonderful teaching and passion.
Graduation planning next?
Oh, yes, and next on the, thank you for guiding me through my agenda. All right, next item on the agenda, graduation plans. Yay.
So I think we have a slide here. Just to briefly, this is truly going to be the drive-by, just to briefly outline our graduation plans for June 6th, and thank you, Joy Jordan, for your help in planning this. It is identical to last year's graduation ceremony. It's going to take place on the Stadium Field, which is the turf, and it will be a live ceremony, so our diplomas will be distributed live. However, the speeches and the, will be pre-recorded. Just like last year, the, the most exciting change, I think, is that our graduates are permitted to bring up to six guests. And one of the challenges that we're faced with is that we actually have to register every guest. as part of the state requirements for commencement. So families right now are registering their six guests, and that's our contact tracing. So we are looking at the possibility of up to 850 people on the stadium field, which is exciting, and I think it's a move and a trend in the right direction. Since we actually, I mean, I think I highlighted up there that the guidance on our graduates has moved to three feet. But when the guidance first came out, it was six feet, but our students can now be three feet. And if you want to scroll a little bit further, you'll see sort of the layout that we're planning to do. I think I gave you a little graph there. So our students will be in the front spaced out at three feet. And then behind them will be family pods of six chairs, and they will be spaced at six feet. And that's essentially what it's going to look like on the field.
So that's all on the field?
It's all on the turf.
I was trying, we had two pictures, and I'm like.
Yep. So that's how the family pods will look like that. And the students will be in rows three feet apart, masked.
Just a quick question. Oh, Meredith, you have a question. Go ahead.
So no one in the bleachers, everybody's on the field.
I just felt like we couldn't really manage the spacing in the bleachers. And if we, if we put chairs on the field, it was a designated space.
Yep.
And, you know, we've already mapped it out, and it's, you know, I think it's going to work well.
Great.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the only thing that we are doing is the registration table will be at the entrance, and you will not be able to enter the field without being preregistered. Students will receive six tickets at our graduation rehearsals on Thursday and Friday. But we have registered all six guests for each graduate.
Okay. How will the seating be determined? Is it first come, first served?
It is. Yep.
All right. Oh, yes.
Yes, Dr. Carpenter.
Do we have a fallback for June 6th?
There is a date, June 7th. Same time.
Are we planning for fog this year?
We actually ordered a tent.
Because I don't want the chair texting me this year.
Yes. Yes. We ordered a tent, so the electronics will be under the tent, out of the fog slash rain. It will be livestreamed again for those who cannot attend, but I think we're, I think we're going to be able to have a great send-off.
Well, the fog was very dramatic. It provided for very dramatic photos.
I mean, I'm sorry for the feed issues, but it was actually left on.
Oh, that's okay. We've moved beyond it.
Yes. Anything else? Any other questions?
Anybody else questions here? Let me just see. Anybody? Sharon, Joe, questions about graduation? I guess I do have a quick question because you said it was identical. Is there going to be a parade?
Yes.
Oh, just like last year. Okay, fantastic.
Yes, so we are meeting at the church again in Chatham.
Okay.
And we will be parading through town.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah, that was a good, a fun thing last year, actually.
Yep.
All right.
Yes?
No runs.
No. Absolutely not.
All right.
All right, thank you.
See nothing else? Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All righty. So moving back to our agenda. So we're going to move back to May 6th Community Forum. That was last week. And let's just open the floor for a debrief, and then we can talk about some next steps. So who would like to take the mic and talk a little bit about their thoughts? Anybody?
I'll go.
Go, Nancy.
Kind of let other people go first. So I had, I spent a lot of time watching videos because while I attended the forum live, I missed the meeting before. So I watched that, and that kind of helped lead me into wanting to go back and watch the forum. And I took a bunch of notes. And so first off, I really like how you handled it. And I like how the commenters made comments, and they kind of had questions built in and how referred them back to Dr. Carpenter, and he was able to kind of answer questions real time. And hopefully, it helped alleviate some of the concerns. But I also came across, so again, I took a bunch of notes. So I'm going through and marking them up. And it seems like there were several themes that people kept repeating over and over and over again. And the first one was that the recommendation and the entire conversation surrounding a potential change was solely due to budget concerns and solving that. And I know that's not true because I was here four years ago when we first had the conversation. And I remember the conversations after you talked about them with Sam Heine and kind of reviewing that. But I think that the parents that were not, I mean, paying attention. If you have a three-year-old, you weren't paying attention three years ago to what was going on in Montemoy. So I hope that they see that this is not a new conversation. It was a rehashing of an old conversation. So hopefully, that was kind of tampered down a little bit. Another one that seemed to come up was the desire for more data, more research, more actual specifics regarding social emotional challenges that the Chatham Elementary children face while they're at Chatham Elementary and then when they transition into the middle school. And so Dr. Mellon referred to a couple and also gave her own personal story. But I think that it's going to be a challenge to kind of provide that data because that data is parents having to come out. We can't provide that data to what's happened. So just a little concern of them actually wanting the hard data of what's happened and when it's happened. Then there was concerns regarding the survey. The results of the survey, the timing of the survey, the questions we're leading. And then there was also the question of teacher anonymity and teachers being able to speak out. So that was a theme that came across. Another concern was the potential of siblings being at different elementary schools with different drop-off times and different bus schedules, which, those are all valid concerns. It's, it's hard to kind of project that now when you know that your kids are in school K-4. But once you have a fourth grader, your youngest is a fourth grader, your oldest is going to be at a different school regardless. So you kind of have to step into that. And I can say that just with my two kids, having two kids at two different schools is always difficult, having to drop them off and pick them up at different times. But that was a concern. There was repeated concerns about the necessity, I guess, of teacher collaboration. And if we can do it via Zoom, why not? Why do we have to do it in person? There was concerns, the preschool changes that happen this current year and next. And I think Dr. Carpenter and Melissa McGuire kind of alluded to those and explained those. So hopefully, that's, while it's still concerning and a challenge, I think hopefully that was kind of explained. And then, you know, the biggest concern is regarding the future of Chatham as a year-round town without having its own elementary school for the Chatham residents. Oops, sorry. So that's kind of a theme that kind of kept going through, that we have to have an elementary school. We have to have our own elementary school. So those are just the seven themes that I felt were repeated throughout many of the commenters. But that's, yeah, I'll start there and just kind of, I had more, but I don't need to say it all.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Terry, go ahead.
Thank you, Tina. Similar to what Nancy said. I, and I've said it a couple of times in the past couple of months, that if there's any advantage that we possess in this very challenging issue, it's that we have some time to digest this. In my own mind's eye, I'm looking at two or three more forums leading up to a late fall, December decision by the school committee. Not that that decision is final because, unique to our regional agreement, that decision has to be empowered by the two select wards and then by the voters. So this could be a long, endless issue counting votes. I thought there was, I've listened to the two forums we've had. The first, primarily invited unofficially, Chatham input. And there were, I would guess, and it's a guess, 20 or 25 speakers and probably many more just listening. And the, the theme that alluded, that Nancy alluded to, that I picked up also, continued last week in the forum with those Chatham folks who very passionately took the mic and shared their concerns. It struck me, though, that the invitation and the question that we were asked to kind of kick around, what is the best configuration of Montemoy's elementary schools for student learning? I think most of the conversation I heard was what was the worst configuration as an option that the Montemoy Elementary School should stay away from? That was the recommendation by our leadership team of designing an upper and a lower school based on population of kids and the ability in one schoolhouse to take the larger number, which would be K through 2. And Chatham would receive the 3-4 cohort for two years and then move that, all those youngsters together to the middle school. So there are a number of folks who reinforced each other as to why the, that option wouldn't be a very good one. As much as I thought there was a collective theme amongst the group, absent two folks from Harwich that spoke, I was waiting for ergo. Therefore, this is the plan that we all think might kind of give a go at and maybe a little committee is looking to. The only thing, and I took fairly decent notes and listened, might have been that leave Chatham alone as an elementary school K through 4. Unanswered question about how we help them out getting a second section in K 1, 2, 3, 4 and make certain that that section was sort of semi-permanent, not just for a year or two. There were some negative comments about they, we understand that just targeting East Harwich, which we haven't even heard about, as a potential redistrict drive, seven or eight minutes. That wasn't even mentioned, other than there was some understanding that the folks who are sending kids to Chatham Elementary understood that might be an unfair solution, short term as well as long term. So there wasn't any positive argument as to, here's the plan, excepting what I kind of surmised, that keep Chatham watch for three or four years, K-4, when with the hope of growth through the citizen committee and some future affordable housing. And that kindergarten, which seems to be 25 or 30 projected next year, might stay 30 and then 40, and we'd find ourselves with a self-made town solution. That's kind of what I surmised, that they didn't really say that. However, I would look forward to several more months of discussion and to kind of form what we seem to be the best plan for all the kids. So in conclusion, as a brief thought, in, pandemic has not allowed us to, but certain passion would. I'd like to hear in the future from more Harwich families and see what they feel what would be the fairest and best school setup for their kids in the near future, in the next, say, three to five years. So that's my thoughts, Tina.
All right, thank you. Sharon, go ahead, and then Joe.
So I'm going to dovetail a lot on what Terry said. I was blown away by the Chatham parents. I have never met a group of parents who were so enthusiastic about the, and happy with the situation they're in and the education their kids are getting as that group. In all my, I don't know, 37 years or something in education, I've never heard such enthusiasm. I was struck by the 30 kids that are coming into kindergarten because if that's the case, there's no need at all to make changes. And this isn't something we've advocated for, it's been brought up as an option. But I, and I do like that, I don't know who the person was that suggested that the teachers, maybe weekly, do some kind of remote collaboration. I do think that's the only thing that's really an important thing, that the teachers can collaborate once a week. And Terry's last, or one of his statements about finding out from Harwich, what Harwich parents think is the best idea for their students, I think, is the next step.
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Joe?
One of the problems of coming in a little bit later on is one has to adjust notes not to be repetitive. I'd just like to mention a smaller point first so it doesn't get lost. But it's been on my mind because we've been doing work with the superintendent evaluation committee. So I'd just like to mention to my colleagues that you will be evaluating the superintendent very soon. And one aspect of the superintendent's job is to engage with the public, and you saw that at the community forum. So I hope you would, while your memories are still fresh or relatively fresh, take some notes on that. And if these forums and other public-type meetings should be a, particularly in this time and these issues, should be, I think, a part of the evaluation that we do. There probably should be all the time, but it seems particularly so now. So that's just a reminder for, you know, preview of coming attractions of what's, of what's coming up. In the interest of time, I'm just going to mention, if you're familiar with the Medco program, a lot of what I heard at the forum sounded like what they would, what's been called white privilege. I think I heard a slew of that that was just from beginning to end. But I haven't time to develop that, so that'll be for, that'll be another comment for another time. But I think essentially, we, I think the fact is we, we got a sliver of opinion. There was a, a group of parents got together. They planned their talking points, and they essentially crowded the microphone. They spoke early, spoke often. And they have a very, very worrisome attitude to the reality that is coming before us. Our number of students are declining. They're declining more rapidly in Chatham than anywhere. They're declining on the Cape. They're declining in Boston. They're declining just about everywhere in Massachusetts. Numbers of students are declining. So what do you got to do about that? How do we handle it? Well, I think we collectively did the right thing. We organized a conversation about it. I don't think it was terribly effective, is I don't think there was much listening going on from the people who attended. They were, I think they were more eager to give vent to their concerns and anxieties. I remember thinking it was really a parade of panic talk. So that we were listening to people who said essentially, we will only believe what we want to believe. And that's the tough part for that meeting. Because I think the presentations by the administrators, a little lengthy, but very good, really first-rate, really informative. Sometimes heartfelt and sometimes data-driven, but overall, really, really first-rate work from, from the administrative team. So when you hear things like, we need more research, that's a euphemism. It means, give us something that makes it sound like that what we want is plausible. Show us that eight kids in an elementary school grade is really wonderful and productive. Find the research that says that. You know, the truth is out there, as if. Or somebody at 8 o'clock in my notes said, give us the true fact. Or somebody at eight o'clock in my notes said, give us the true facts. And that one struck me. A parent is asking the administrators and school committee to provide the true facts. Well, that's what you had been hearing for the, first of all, for the 45-minute presentation the administrators did. You had been hearing true facts. The problem is that people didn't like those facts, they wanted different facts. They're asking for alternative facts, but since that's too loaded a code word, they came up with something else, the true facts. And then the polls, oh my goodness, how dare you? You gave a poll, I, I'm gonna try to hold back in sarcasm, I really do. But you gave a poll, you'd be, you'd be condemned if you hadn't given polls. And now you're criticized because you do. Well, those polls are only a moment in time, they were a couple of months ago, so eh, they don't really count. And besides, they were during COVID pandemic, how can you give a poll during, and you only gave 10 days to allow people to answer the polls? It's an invalid poll, give another one, and keep giving them until I get the answers that I want. Oh, by the way, you polled the teachers? Well, they didn't tell the truth, they were all afraid that you're gonna fire them. So, you know, those polls are invalid too. Every poll is invalid to the, to the faction that spoke unless they hear what they want to hear. And that's, that's not uncommon these days, but it's, it's kind of discouraging. I would say, um, to sum it up, we, we heard a chorus of denial with voices amplified by fear. That's informative, to some extent instructive, but it was not really our purpose to provide a platform to, uh, a frightened group of folks.
Hi, thank you, Joe. Uh, yes, Superintendent Meredith. Okay, Meredith.
Just a few points, um, that I took away from that forum was that, you know, there were similar feelings that in statements we heard from the first forum to the second forum, um, common themes like Nancy was talking about. Uh, I think there was a lot of reasons why not to make changes, um, but I do think that, you know, whatever direction we go in, if there is a change that needs to be made, I think that the school system and the community have always supported our changes. When we changed to adding the early release day, there was a lot of pushback with that, and families adjusted, the community adjusted, the schools adjusted, um, and everybody's okay. And the same with the time change. When the district decided to flip the times, it was an uproar of pushback, and now that it's switched, it's okay. Um, you know, and, and then, you know, families that have children in multiple schools, I mean, I do, I am very excited for my younger daughter to be in the same school finally after three years, but for three years, they've been in different schools, so you adjust, you make, you make do. Um, so I believe that if there is a change for this district, for the elementary schools, that the community, the school will come together and, and will make it smooth, a smooth transition for everybody. Um, and I think, I just echo what Terry said and what Sharon said, is that I would like to hear from more Harwich families. I mean, I know that, you know, one of the big pieces is that it'll be a big change for the Chatham Elementary School and the Chatham community, but if we were to do this upper and lower, that's a big change for the Harwich families and the Harwich community. So I would really like to hear from more Harwich families. So those are just my.
Thank you. Before I throw the mic, I can, I'm gonna speak, because I wanna, uh, respond to what you just said about Harwich families. What really struck me, and it was said twice, one by a citizen and the other by a, a father of Harwich Elementary kids, and the quote, "I don't have a dog in this fight." So that is my understanding of why we're not hearing from Harwich, because they really don't think they have a dog in this fight. It seems like they're really happy, uh, with their elementary school. So that, to me, explains why they're not showing up. Um, the other thing I wanted just to say about the Chatham, um, voices, I, what I was hearing is there is a belief among many of those, of the families that were there, that the tide is turning. I mean, there is the belief in that, and they spoke to that. Also, we did clarify, because the statement that you're, we're trying to close Chatham Elementary School, we clarified that at the forum. So it's closing Chatham Elementary School as is. So we, it was important for us to clarify what, what that meant. Um, the other thing about the budget, because Nancy opened her comments around the budget question, that question was addressed and clarified by the superintendent, um, because this isn't a, or this particular, the title, you know, the title that Terry just read us, the question, has nothing to do with the budget. So we clarified that at the forum last week. And the other thing I do want to say, yes, we absolutely have time, and as a side note, and stepping away from that question, we can't let go of the financial inequity for Harwich. So that is something that is circling, and we can't lose sight of that in the, in the idea that we have more time. I mean, we do have time, but we can't let go of that circling, whatever you wanna call it. Um, so those are my comments. Superintendent?
Yeah, just, um, some thoughts. One of the things that I think saddened me, um, uh, you know, about the forum and just some of the, some of the dialogue, and even some of the dialogue on social media afterwards is, you know, I, I think that there was a perception that, oh, there's this bullying talent at Chatham Elementary School, and, yeah, and it needs to be addressed, and, you know, the kindness club, you know, you know, we, you know, just reference to the kindness club, let's, you know, let's bulk that up more at Chatham Elementary School. And the reality is, there's a kindness club at Chatham Elementary School, there's a kindness club at Harwich Elementary School. And we had a presentation, just, I think, the last school committee meeting by Ms. Maguire, you know, on bullying. I, I'm not so naive to think that bullying doesn't happen in any school, I think, but some does. And.
One.
We have data that shows it's, it's at a really low level. What I also know from a fact, as somebody who sent the kids to the Chatham schools, to the Chatham, you know, Chatham Elementary School and initially Chatham Middle School, is that I think every parent who.
Uh-oh.
Rewind. I think, I, I, I think what, you know, what I can, you know, say is, a fact is, I think that every parent who has had children that have come up through Chatham, you know, that, you know, former Chatham middle, well, middle school or elementary school, and even now, um, I think we all have these, these one degree of separation stories of a parent who has a child who didn't find a connection. And, and that's what really saddens me. I, I've said very publicly before, I, I was blessed, I, my daughter found her lifelong friends in a fourth-grade classroom at Chatham Elementary School, so, so lucky. Very lucky that my son found one really special peer in a fifth-grade or sixth-grade classroom at Chatham Middle School. But had that sixth-grade peer not been there, it would have been a really challenging introduction to, you know, to this new, you know, this new school district. And, you know, I, I, I do think that almost every Chatham parent who's kind of, has slightly older children, knows somebody, and, and I think there's this, well, where's the data? And the challenge is, I think, most of these families don't want to come out and talk about that at a school committee meeting or a public forum, you know, why a connection didn't happen. It's a, it's a very painful thing, and I think, and I appreciate that there seemed to be a sentiment that, that, you know, one child experiencing that is one too many. But at the same time, there seemed to be denial that it even exists. And I think anybody who has older kids that have come up through Chatham know that one degree of separation story or stories, and it's just sad. You, you, you know, like, I wish every child had what my daughter found in the fourth-grade classroom at Chatham Elementary School. And, and, you know, and the, the educational, you know, proposal or the recommendation behind this is, is can we do something better to try to maximize that happening as best we can, given the size school district we have, the facilities we have? Is there something we could do to maximize that possibility and minimize the chance that somebody doesn't connect? And, you know, and it's, it's a, so it's a tough one, you know, the, the data isn't on the bullying side, but the, the data is, you know, how do you, how do you have those voices really come out and educate, uh, a group that's, you know, that I think is, is in denial that they happen?
Okay, thank you. Um, Nancy and then Terry.
So to follow up on Dr. Carpenter's, I actually asked my kids last time, because they were there while I was listening to the forum and hearing my comments, and both of my kids went through Chatham Elementary School. Both of my kids struggled with connections at Chatham Elementary School. I attended Chatham Elementary School. It wasn't Chatham Middle School, it was Chatham High School, 7 through 12. I struggled with connections. My graduating class at Chatham was 32 kids. I didn't actually graduate from Chatham High School, long story. Um, I left after second semester of my junior year, moved to Florida. Um, but I am an example of someone who went through first grade through halfway through 11th grade, struggled with connections. Both of my kids. There's no data on this. There's no data around this because there wasn't a bullying issue, there wasn't a social-emotional issue. It was just a struggle for both of my kids. So I can say that, like Dr. Carpenter's saying, is it something I wanted to say? No, but my kids actually said, can we come talk? Can we come talk about it? And I was like, yes, if you want to. They actually wanted to talk on the forum, but circumstances didn't allow. Um, but I said, if you wanna come to the school committee meeting and talk and explain situations, by all means, because they feel very strongly that the smaller environment, I believe my son's class, at some point, he had three classes at Chatham Elementary, but at some point, there was a limited number of boys in his grade where there was only three or four boys per homeroom for a couple of years. Um, I was trying to rehash it with him and remember, but neither one of us could really remember. Um, but it didn't allow for him to find a connection with other boys. He did find one, and he is still connected with him, but it's still a challenge to have that situation. So I just, I needed to follow up on that because I'm an example, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Terry?
Thank you, Tina. A just follow-up thought also, based on our conversation in recalling the forum. The forum, I, again, I can sit back because I'm a grandfather and I don't have immediate kids in the programs, either school. So I can appreciate their commitment to what they see as an optimum experience for their kids, these parents that shared. A quick comment that I sensed during the topic, when, uh, Dr. Mellon mentioned a couple of her stories and alluded to the word, as did Dr. Carpenter, um, social-emotionally and bullying. That's a trigger word, and I think the interested group the other night took it as, I took it as a false flag, but they sincerely could take it and say, well, there's a bigger problem than upper and lower, so let's investigate that before we get back to this. I don't think there's any necessity, it was just taken out of context. My final thought. My, the message, and we've got several months to digest it. Some moms and dads were saying, you know, if our Chatham town fathers come through with an extra few thousand dollars, hundreds of thousands, why don't you just leave well enough alone? And we can sit back and hopefully watch that so-called projected 30 kindergarteners stay 30 every year for the next three or four, five years, and everyone in the, in the family of Chatham might feel good about two Ks, two P's, two ones, and next door, as their partners continue on with about 500 youngsters with five sections, give or take, and life went on. The argument would fall into, in there's some sense to it, why don't we explore that, and we have, that both towns pay for their own elementary schools? Which leads me to my post-thought, that going back three or four years in this discussion, so there was no surprises, but maybe some moms and dads thought it was, that you have to be careful about what this class size, not the school itself, but as you build a school, if it has 18 classrooms, you try to fill the 18. If you agree with the teachers' groups, then we're gonna try to keep it at 18 kids, which allows boys and girls with a mix of plus or one or minus. If, in a negative sense, the Chatham demographic, which all points in that direction, continues to slip, the 18 might in fact be 12, or 13, or 11, which you would then cross your fingers and hope that school choice could fill the gap. But if it didn't, it creates a problem with our staff teachers. Who wouldn't, as a dad or as a teacher, wanna be assigned in three years to that scenario with a third-grade class with 13? My colleague in high, uh, Freudian slip, um, Howard's, uh, Howard's Elementary teaching third grade with 18 youngsters, but getting, if they're in the same year, the same salary. Well, what's the answer? Howard's needs to come up with more money and some more rooms to make the classes a smaller, to match the smaller town that's able to afford 10 or 11 or 12, because I think some of what I heard was, what would be wrong with that over here? Many parents love us a small class. We all would, we all would. But 18 for a town like Howard's in Chatham is a very, very good number when you match it in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So we've elected not to just leave well enough alone, because the idea that was presented, good, bad, or indifferent, at least it was a system, elementary system response. It wasn't signifying five streets in East Howard's, which would give us 55 kids and two buses, and cross our fingers for two years to see if those numbers continue to give us two. And so we wait. And if, if the efforts made in Chatham to enlarge their parent, uh, family group stays and then shrinks, people would say to us, why didn't you do something back there when you, when you were able to see it two or three years in advance? Now it's gonna have to be done very quickly. So it's, 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 it certainly keeps us at, sometimes awake at night, trying to figure out what would be the fairest for everybody. But at least we've launched into it, and we've got, I think, again, several months to digest and talk to the teachers and the experts and the Howard's moms and dads as to what plan seems to fit. And my last thought again, it's not that upper and lower is the brand-new creation, that there's no other district in the Cape or southeast of Massachusetts that's experienced it. My other thought might be in the several months that our curriculum director and our two principals and some selected teachers in both towns take some visits to those upper and lower elementary schools and sit down with staff and administrators and say, how's it going for the last three or four years? I end my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, uh, yes. Oh, I was gonna move into that in my next steps.
Just, just one really quick one, you know, so, um, join, and help summarize the whole conversation and the, the presentation that we made in one nice, crisp.
Yes.
Here's, here's all, you know, all the information on one sheet, you know, so, you know, so we'll, we'll put this on the website to, you know, to at least allow people to have a Cliff Notes and understand what we're, what we're talking about and what the conversation is.
Okay, thank you. I have, um, an edit request under, and this is for the flyer. Under note at the bottom, it says, this is a recommendation requested by the school committee. I think that could be misunderstood. So I would recommend, this is a recommendation based on the question that was asked by the school committee and select boards. And I, I can just hand that to you unless you want And I, I can just hand that to you unless you want to write it. Okay. That would be my only edit, but I think this is nice and colorful. Part of our next steps, just to kind of have a, at a glance, fact sheet. Any other comments about the flyer? Uh, Sharon, go ahead.
I don't have the flyer. Was that somehow in our?
Uh, yeah, I think it came after Sharon, so we will make sure that you get this.
So can it be put on the, uh, something so we can see what it says?
Uh, let's see, well, yeah, we'll try to do that. We'll see. Sharon, um, Leah's going to try that. And while she's doing that, I just want to real quickly move into next steps. Is there a next step to take? Um, I had written, I thought Nancy's idea, I'm just jotting, this is kind of like my little parking lot list. Students coming to the table, I thought was an interesting, like when you were talking about your, um, your kids, students coming to the table, I think we also have to be prepared, opening that door, is that we are going to hear from students who are very happy there, so, and want it to stay the way it is. But that certainly is an option. I thought Teri's suggestion about the educators going and visiting other schools and coming back with a report or some feedback or whatever. Another next step I thought about was wondering if, if it may, if the roundtable that we assembled back in December, if we should, shouldn't get together for another conversation now that we've had two forums. So that was a suggestion I have, which I can put that in motion if everybody agrees, at least on that one. Superintendent, yeah, go ahead.
I had also just shared the recommendation and the presentation with both select boards and, and at least extended the invitation that if they want me to come and discuss it with either board, I'd be happy to, so.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
I've had similar thoughts that the, the, while I saw a couple of Chatham selectmen, or I saw at least one Chatham select board member and the town manager were at the forum. I don't know if others happened to be in attendance and/or watched the video later. Um, and being that the select boards requested this, requested some sort of recommendation, I think we should have some sort of presentation coming to them by the administration to kind of get that ball rolling, especially in, in Harwich. And I also, in terms of next steps, I feel like we need to form some sort of direction because while I very much appreciate the public forums and listening to the comments and listening to people, I have a feeling that we're not going to hear from too many new voices. I feel like we're going to hear from the same voices that we've heard at the last two forums. And while I also would like to hear from additional Harwich families because it does impact them, I think until we kind of make that push in Harwich, like we made the push in Chatham to get that opinion coming, we're not going to hear from them. So I, I, I feel like we need to take this recommendation and then decide what we're going to do with it. Are we going to move forward this, with this recommendation? Are we going to form a, a subgroup that will research and do visits to other schools? What are we, what are we going to do with this recommendation other than try to get more, solicit more input on it? And I, that's kind of where I got stuck, and I don't know the answer. I'm just, that's, I feel like it's our job to take this recommendation from these administrators that we trust to run the day-to-day operations of our elementary schools and take it and do something with it, other than just insistent input from it.
Oh, okay, thank you. Teri?
Uh, I echo Nancy's idea, but I'd take a mini-step, and that would be for Scott to initiate with, uh, Mark and our two principals, a presentation to either a joint or singular two select boards. And let them for 45 minutes or an hour, here in, I keep saying here in person, but however it works out, I think that'd be a nice, not a mini-step, but a controllable step that gives those power brokers an opportunity to firsthand ask questions. The other thing I caution, and it's just a calendar issue, uh, both towns are about to go through their election process, and there are, uh, there's an opening in the select board in Howard, so that's in the next two or three weeks. So whatever we consider doing, I think I'd wait to have that over before we take it to a step.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion. Uh, and, oh, Sharon, go ahead.
I, I really feel that your comment, Tina, about, um, I don't have a horse in the game, is just so important. I, I really feel like Harwich parents are trying to get through whatever to some, and I just don't think they know about this. Uh, I really would like to see something that went out to every single parent and to have some kind of Zoom meeting, you know, superintendents talk or something. It doesn't have to be all this, or it can be all the presentation that we had. But I do not want to see our Harwich voters or Harwich parents be upset, and I know they will be, if they feel like we've reached out. I'm not saying we've reached out more to Chatham, but Chatham's had more interest and involvement. I mean, I, I only did hear of that one parent from Harwich, maybe there was another one I missed. But I really think we have to do this before next year. I think we should do it, as Teri said, you know, there's an election, I think it's the 18th, and right, right in the next week may be a good time to have it.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Are you done, or did you freeze? I have to put my glasses on. Are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
I'm finished.
So I just want to respond to the Harwich thing, and I'm just, I think I'm just looking at this from a, a place of being a realist. Going in front of the Harwich, and I think Teri makes a good point, to wait for the elections, for the election, because they're, you know, they'll have a new member, and there's an open seat that they'll have to figure out, I guess, what we're doing with that. But I don't know, if we go in front of the Harwich Board of Selectmen for right now, I mean, they're really concerned about the inequity. I, I really, speaking very honestly, don't think this lower-upper is even on their radar. We did have two Harwich selectmen who were there, uh, last week. One was only there for a short time, the other stayed the entire time. And I believe we had three, if not four, of the Chatham selectmen there. Uh, but I still don't see what's going in front of Harwich. I mean, I agree with Sharon in a sense. I can say, Sharon, that this has gone out to the Harwich families in the same way it's gone out to Chatham families. Why they're not responding, I, I don't have an answer to that. But the, I keep coming back to the, I don't have a dog in this fight. Because clearly, they're not seeing that this matters to them for some reason, and I don't know why. So I guess we'll have to, to figure that out. But I think Teri's point to wait until the selectmen are elected or the reboard is a good one. And I will say that at the forum last week, we had two Harwich parents who spoke. One made the comment, I don't have a dog in this fight, but he's very, very happy with Harwich Elementary School the way it is. The other one, uh, was concerned about the redistricting, did not want it to happen, didn't think that that was fair at all. And then we had a grandparent who spoke, uh, in favor of the upper lower. So those were the three Harwich voices that we heard. Um, so next steps, I agree, I think we're formed out at this point, because I don't know that we're going to hear anything new. So I think presentations are good, but going back to the roundtable. I would certainly, as the chair, like to call the roundtable if all of you are in agreement of the ones that, um, got together back in December and, and I guess early January, and perhaps have a conversation now that we've had two forums. So we can at least take that step and see what kind of feedback comes out of that. Nancy?
When you say the roundtable, you're talking not all three boards?
Uh, no, it's actually, um, it's the members-
It's a smaller segment, right?
Right, it's the members of the roundtable that we, where we assembled, we had a board of selectmen representative from both boards, we had the town managers, the finance directors, Scott was there, myself, Joanne was there, Teri and Nancy, both of you popped in and out of that, I think, a little bit. Um, so it's that roundtable.
I just wanted to make sure, because while you have your election in Harwich next week, Chatham's election isn't until after the June 12th town meeting, so whatever that next week is, I don't know what the date is. And there are two open seats for selectmen and three people running.
Right.
So there could be a change. So I'd like to hold off on the full board's meeting until after that.
Yes, absolutely.
But the round, that's why I wanted to clarify the roundtable.
Yeah, but the roundtable can still get together.
Yes, of course.
Yeah. Right, go ahead, Teri.
Uh, Tina, at first blush, and anything we do shows some proactiveness. However, uh, short of beating a dead horse, I think the working group went as far as they could, and that generated some public forums. I really think after the two elections, contacted within a week, that Scott and his team, to me, that would be the most logical. This has been explained, uh, to the forum and on TV here at a school committee night. One could say, what, what, uh, upper and lower interests do the select boards have? A lot of interests. Because forgetting the monetary issue of yes and no, they need to vote yes to another plan that we come up with, or to this plan. So they better, so therefore, I think that within the next two weeks, the next step would be for Scott to see if he could arrange for a, a meeting with the select boards, or board separately, to walk them through the hour of the slide presentation, this, the advantages we see, and elicit from them any ideas they have as people who are going to be part of this vote. And from there, we can come back and regroup and say, you know, it's early June, and maybe we give it a rest for a month, uh, before the summer starts.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from you, Teri, is you don't think the roundtable is necessary-
Yes.
At this point, okay. And, and Scott, did you have a thought on that?
I'm fine with the roundtable. I'm fine with the roundtable, I'll follow your lead.
Okay, all right. Um, any other thoughts regarding next steps for now, that we can just at least take in the next couple of weeks before our next meeting? All right, seeing none. So we're, we're going to put this on the website with the edit, that will be that, and then I guess we'll just have a conversation. And if nothing else, I mean, Scott and I can meet with different people too, so, and just, just get some thoughts on where people are and are we answering questions? Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the third quarter finance report. Yay, here he comes.
All right, good evening, school committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you. We, I circulated in your papers, uh, the finance report for the third quarter. I won't go into, I won't, I won't repeat everything that's in there. Uh, I'll just maybe give you some of the highlights. So by the end of the third quarter, our expenditure was below where it was at the same point in the last two years. I, we've discussed, you know, I think, I talked about this at the, my last finance quarter update. The reasons are, are included that we, the district made reductions in response to COVID prior to the start of the financial year, and that's had the benefit throughout this year. Also, some activities have not been able to go ahead due to the restrictions placed on us by COVID. And where there has been increases related to COVID, a lot of the time, we've been able to pay for that primarily through state grants, so we've not had that extra hit on the budget. So as a result, there is a unencumbered balance, an unencumbered and unexpended balance right now of about 3.8%, which is, which, you know, puts us in a good position. There is, one of our coronavirus relief grants is over encumbered at the moment, just because there was so much AAP captured and a lot of that. Once that's resolved, then those, some of those expenses will hit the general fund, which will bring the balance down to around 3%, just a little below 2%. But that's still, you know, a great position to be in as we come towards the end of the year. Couple of other points, the revenue from state grants is much higher than it was, and that's because of those COVID relief grants. Then in the paper, you'll see there's a lot more detail on each of the different cost centers in our expenditure. I've included a couple of charts as well, just to show examples of where we're coming in under budget and things like athletics and substitutes, where despite increasing the rate for substitutes, we've not been able to get enough in. And so you've seen the, the expenditure go down. The one area that is showing, one of the, well, the one area that's showing a deficit at the moment is fixed charges, and that includes benefits. And that's really just, I guess this has been a repeating thing in these quarterly reports, is that the way we encumber the health insurance payments means that it's overstated each year, and, and once we get into quarter four, that will be dissolved, and it will not be over budget. And then there are a couple of areas within the cost centers, for example, medical health services, which have gone over budget, and that, those deficits will be offset by the surpluses in the, in the, in the other areas, as I mentioned. So that's some of the highlights. I don't know if there's any questions or comments?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. We're good.
That's it, nothing required.
Thanks, Michael.
All right, thank you very much.
Good news.
Thank you.
Moving to the next item, treasurer hiring process and job description, and this looks like it has, needs a vote, so go ahead.
Yes, this does need a vote. So very sadly, our long-term district treasurer, Don Mercure, has tended his retirement. So obviously, we'll be very sad to see Don leave. I think, I think it was superintendent mentioned it, Don might be, have been employee number one for Monomoy Regional School District. He was a very perfect, because you can't, you can't hire anybody else until you have a treasurer, so he was the first person hired, so it would be, you know, be a big change to see him go. But we have turned our minds to finding somebody else to, eh, fill that position. Don's last day will be July 29, and ideally, we would like to start his replacement a little before that, you know, maybe a week before that, just so we have some overlap. But that will obviously depend on schedules. The one other change, so we've put together a proposed outline timeline and, um, interview group recruitment team to do the recruitment. The one other change to note to the job description is that we have reduced the hours for the position. So actually, prior to Don deciding to retire, we, he and I had been talking about reducing the number of hours for the position down to 14 hours a week. So it used to be more, I mean, it used to, at some, one point, it was five days a week when we were going through the building project. But with the building project kind of being wrapped up, and although we're continuing to pay the debt on that, you know, there's not nearly as much work as there once was. And another big area of work for the treasurer was managing student activities, but we've, you know, student activities have been rolled into our overall accounting structure, which means they're much more easily and much more effectively managed through our existing accounting structure, so that's great. But it means that the treasurer is, doesn't have such a large commitment required, and so we're proposing to reduce that to 14 hours. So any questions about that? And if not, we'd need a vote-
Okay.
-to, eh, confirm the process.
Okay, um, just a quick comment, I'm just looking at the screening committees and, uh, with the school committee members. So I guess this might have been something that was brought up in the finance subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't see that, yes. Should've said we had a-
Just making sure, okay.
...
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments on this? All right, seeing none. Meredith, go ahead.
So I would like to make a motion to allow the proposed subcommittee listed on our packets to proceed with the hiring process for a new treasurer following the timeline as presented in our packets.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, Nancy's seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. We will take a vote on the motion, uh, starting with Joe.
Uh, Joe Osziello, now unmuted, aye.
Thank you. Sharon?
Sharon Stout, aye.
Thank you. Meredith?
Aye.
Thank you. Nancy?
Aye.
Teri?
Aye.
Tina is an aye, so that's unanimous for this evening.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, now we move into subcommittee reports, and we're going to start with the 2020, 2021 superintendent evaluation update and proposal. There is a potential vote. So Joe, you take it away.
Once again, unmuted, I hope. Thank you. Um, we're coming through okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, thank you, I, I keep asking, because sometimes on my end, it must be on my end, um, sound drops. First off, it probably would be helpful if, uh, Leah could put our comments or proposals up on the screen, which will give you a chance to take a look at them, and, uh, otherwise, I can read them.
Okay, we're working on that. We, we're working on that right now.
And, uh, while she's- And while she's working on that, I'll try to give a few general comments to give a context to this situation. First off, for the members of the school committee and also for the general public, our superintendent evaluation subcommittee consists of four members. That's Terry Russell, Joanne Sheehan, Sharon Stout, and myself. I think we're the oldest or most senior of any committee. Hopefully, that means we're also the most wise. We, we have, the proposals we'd like to present to you, we'd like you to vote on, are really nothing at all extraordinary, almost routine. And to some extent, it simply says, let's please do what we're already doing. So a fair question would be, why do these even come up as something to vote on? Why bother? Why vote on to do what we're already doing? And the, my answer to this, or our answer to this, is that we took the time, which a committee needs to do, not every year, not every other year, but certainly every decade, to look over our evaluation instruments and see if there were upgrades that we needed to download, if we needed to improve our instrument some way. When we do evaluations of the superintendent, as we're about to do shortly, we are using a document that comes from the state. Our document comes from the, essentially, our education department. And it's been around for a long time. I, I'm kind of guessing that when our, when this evaluation instrument was put into place, I think maybe Netflix was still sending out DVDs by mail. And so we wanted to look, we wanted to take some time and say, what's the research out there? What's the academics' research out there? What are the educational scholars thinking? What have they come up with? And is there a way for us to improve the instrument we have? Because as I said, we didn't create it. We simply did what most every other, what I guess most every other district and town school committee did in the Commonwealth. We just took what the department of elementary and secondary education provided. So we did a lot of look. We did a lot of reading. We did research. We discussed it. And, you know, there are differences. There are some good ideas. There are good insights. But we felt by and large that the DESI document that we do use is a good one, a valid one, and meets the needs of our district. So we wanted to say, and this is what we really wanted to get in the record, but we've done some work. We've done some research. We have done what an evaluation subcommittee ought to be doing periodically. And we are recommending that we keep the evaluation instrument that we are now using. And another question comes up, more of a conjunctural question. You know, the DESI document has several strands, several items, you know, instruction, leadership, et cetera. Shouldn't we add one, even temporarily? Could we add a strand related to superintendent functioning, admin team functioning in reference to the crisis brought on by the COVID pandemic? And we threw that around, and we came to the point of recognizing that the subcategories of the strands provides ample opportunity to address those issues properly. And we did not need to add a strand even temporarily. We did think that the material we read was important, and we recommended that that information be provided to the entire school committee, to all our colleagues, and also to the superintendent. There was a little bit of sentiment, as in, you know, we had to read all that stuff. You should too. But I think that was in good spirits, a bit of jest. But there is a lot of material out there. And we tried to read the cream of the crop, and we were thinking that there is substance there for future conversations. We talked about recommending maybe a workshop in the future, but we decided to leave that to the committee as a whole as a possible future goal. And we make no recommendation in that regard. Perhaps if our school committee colleagues do look at this, look at this material, they may think that it bears more discussion that a conversation amongst all the school committees on, all the school committee members on this material would be fruitful, and that's for a future concern. And then finally, we wanted to, really wanted to look at the evaluator comments a bit. And we, some of us felt that when we write our comments, there are certain things that we think are so important, we'd like to see them highlighted and brought up in the summaries that are done by either the school committee chair or the assistant chair. So those were our thoughts and recommendations. Terry, Sharon, if I have misrepresented or omitted, please speak up. The motion I am going to make when we maybe finish conversation is that we take these four items as a block and vote them together, which will save a little bit of time, as we're already coming on to quarter nine, rather than take them individually with a voice vote.
Okay.
But this is our work to date. We still have other things to talk about, you know, the one-year evaluation versus a two-year evaluation. That's, we've kind of touched on that a little bit, but we haven't gone too deeply on it. And that'll be for future commentary in a future report.
All right, thank you. Sharon, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Did you call on me, Tina?
Yes, I did. And if you could turn your video on, it kind of went off.
All right, so without that pulled up, I can't really comment exactly.
Okay.
If I could say that again, I could comment better.
We're going to pull it back up again.
But I know at that meeting, I asked that on number four, the evaluator may choose to highlight several sentences that he or she believes should be included. And so what I said was, will be included, and no one objected to that. I think that, and down here, this thing was never in our, was never in our meeting about writer of final will embed that. Those last two sentences need to be changed, because when the summary's done, if you're going to represent what everyone says, you need to say what. By, you know, you can say one member, or you could say the general feeling was, if it's several people. But it needs to include what every member puts into that. And I thought we did say that it would be one year. I thought we left that. But anyway, speaking about this, it's just the last two sentences that I think are not accurate about what we said in our committee. And I would only be supportive of this if each member on the school committee can underline or highlight whatever. It could be one sentence. It could be more than one sentence, as long as it's standard, and have that go directly into the summary narrative. Otherwise, people could be completely left out on the school committee.
Okay, thank you. And it says potential vote. Is the preference of the subcommittee to have a vote tonight? Do you need a vote, Joe? Anybody from the?
I can't see, I'm looking at the screen, so if Terry wanted to address this first, go ahead, and then I will. Terry, did you want to say on this, or no?
Joe, I thought your summary was accurate. And I, just to reinforce, Sharon, I think the discussion was fairly well developed that each member, the eight members, in their summative, their narrative, would choose or attempt to choose one sentence, maybe more. They would highlight their general impression of how well the year has gone, or whatever. And the writer of the narrative, the vice chair or the chair, would capture that by seeing either an underline or an asterisk on that individual's turned-in evaluation and include that in the summary. So other than that, I think that the four items were accurate.
Okay. And Sharon, if I understood?
I don't know if we, I don't know if we need to vote on this, but I think we could. The last sentence of our last proposal refers to the comments that each individual school committee member makes. And we're asking that the evaluator include at least one comment by each member, so that last sentence addresses the concern that everybody should be represented. But we did want to have, we did want to make sure that everybody got to have a say, that nothing was, that no individual was neglected or left out. And our last sentence tried to address that.
Okay. And Sharon, if I, if I understood your, it says evaluator may choose, may choose to highlight. I think you're asking for evaluator will highlight at least one sentence? Is that what you're saying? Sharon?
I can't see it again.
Okay.
Basically, basically, okay, so the evaluator should choose or may choose. I don't care if somebody wants to not be included. It could say one or several sentences. And that will be included as written in the final summative narrative. That's all.
Okay. Nancy, go ahead.
I believe the last sentence captures what you're looking for, Sharon. It says the writer of the?
It doesn't, because they're saying it will be embedded. My interpretation of that is that whoever the writer is putting it together might say, we were all happy with how Dr. Carpenter did COVID. But somebody might say something specific, positive, negative, whatever. And they'd want, and they've chosen, that evaluator would choose that or a couple of things to put in there. But if somebody is kind of smushing it together to summarize that, it is easily open to people not having the intent of what they write, what they write should be in there as written. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so what you are suggesting is that we just need to reword that, that guarantees that one, is that what you're?
I will, I'll say that. So evaluator may choose to highlight several sentences that he or she believes should be included, that she or he would want included in the final summary document. That all of the, these sentences will be included in the final document as written.
Okay. So Joe, let me go back to you, because it sounds like you don't need the vote, if I'm hearing you correctly. So is this something that the subcommittee can just tighten? I don't know.
I'm not sure tightening is it exactly. I think we could just say, remove the word embed and say, we'll include at least one
Okay.
highlighted comment from each member to provide a fluently written document. Now Sharon is worried that this text can be somewhat maliciously misinterpreted by a future evaluator to keep someone out. And she's trying to look for the wording that would prohibit such exclusion. And that was our intent in trying to write this in the first place. That's what we meant by the word embed. But if we say that the writer of the summative narrative will include one highlighted, at least one highlighted comment from each school committee member as to provide a fluent, a fluently written document, surely that gets what I, I think was intended in the first place, is we wanted the evaluative document to be representative of the school committee as a whole and have a voice of each member to be heard.
Okay.
You know, that's all. And so we can just change embed to add a phrase. And I think that answers the objection, which is consistent with our concern. And again, I, I think these are so, I mean, we're essentially saying, you know, stay the course. There's no particular changes here. I would also mention on number four, the person who did the comments last year was Joanne Sheehan. In our meeting, and unfortunately, Joanne isn't here to speak on that tonight. But in our meeting, she said, when she wrote the evaluator comments and the summative narrative, she did make a point of including comments by every single person. We thought that was a good idea. We wanted to see that continue to go forward. And that was our intent as we wrote it. And it's even more clear now. There's nothing to, there's nothing even to make even semblance of an argument. So again, I, you know, I would just suggest we move on this, because I don't, because really, what we're doing is confirming what we're doing, what we've been doing all along.
Okay, thank you.
There's no particular change yet.
All right, thank you. And as we've been speaking, Sharon, the changes have been made. So what you're looking at on the screen is the requested languaging. So?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, great. So subcommittee, do you want to move ahead with the vote? Because it does say potential vote.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we adopt these four proposals as a block. And of course, I'd need a second.
Okay, a second?
I would second it.
All right. Terry has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're going to vote on the motion, starting with Joe.
Joe Osceolo, aye.
Thank you. Sharon?
Aye.
Thank you. Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that passes. Thank you very much, subcommittee. Moving on to the policy subcommittee, and we've got three policies on the agenda for a first read. Sharon, would you like to take the lead on this?
Sure. I can just place those things.
Okay. Or while you're looking for it, I'll just start, and you tell me when you're back.
I have them, Tina.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So I don't know which order it's in, but let me, because we've had most talk about school choice. The topics that have been brought up are reflected here. The statute requires a random selection process if there are more applicants for admission than are seats available. That was a net addition. I think the two other things on page one are just a clarification, because there were some questions about the dates. The page two was mostly just a citing of the law.
Okay, thank you. So everything in red is all the changes that were requested last time?
Right. But let me just say, the most, the most important thing that we talked about last time was that we have now numbered the priority for school choice, which wasn't numbered before, and some people had an issue. We thought it was clear, but it evidently wasn't clear. So siblings' preference is first, and that's spelled out in the law. And then number two is inter-district. We all felt strongly that Harwich and Chatham students should have a priority placement if there's a lottery for available seats at the elementary schools in each town. So Chatham could go to Harwich, Harwich could go to Chatham above someone from NACET or DY or any other school system. And then the last thing was if a Monomoy staff member had a student or somebody else from an employee of the town would qualify for next preference above people out of district.
Okay, thank you. So?
On that set.
Okay, thank you. School committee, did this, some of you had concerns? Did we capture those? Any other questions, comments?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Anybody? Joe, are you good? Okay, perfect. So it looks like we don't have any objections to this. We're going to move this to the next meeting on the 29th for a second read, and that's school choice. So Sharon, if I can recommend, before we, let's take bullying last, because that's the most detailed. Could we do online fundraising? Go ahead.
So online fundraising and solicitations or crowdsourcing, nothing has been changed in that. It just, I didn't bring it forward last time. But it's all, it's a new, it's a new policy. So there's nothing highlighted. So there's nothing highlighted there to be changed. The whole thing is clear. And rather than go through me reading two pages of it, just read it over carefully, probably you have before this meeting, read it over carefully. I don't think, this is kind of what's being done right now. The schools are starting to implement this or have been implementing this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this one? Any edits? Joe, are you good? Okay, all right. I see no objections, so this looks like it can move for a second read on the 29th. All right, that will go to the 29th, second read. And the last one?
The bully prevention and intervention plan. So you can see that in red, there are all kinds of different topics that have been added. And so they're defining what bullying is. They're also talking about the public being involved with developing the plan. We had one of our policy committee meetings open to the public. We haven't had any suggestions for change, assessing needs and resources, planning and oversight. So this, this is pertinent to student to student and employees also. There will be an annual staff training and ongoing professional development. They are talking about different accesses to resources and services. For instance, counseling students with disabilities, being referred to outside, or academic or non-academic activities, or specific bully prevention approaches that might be used. Mentioning the, teaching the students all about the person doing the aggressor, the target and the bystander, if there is a bystander or bystanders. All right, I'm going, moving to page six, and that's just finishing up that. Whenever we're talking about a resource officer or principal, we are trying to put or designate because there will be somebody designated in case that person's not available. Then on page nine talks about the disciplinary actions that will be taken, promoting safety for the targets, the students or adults that were bullied. And the particulars about that, collaboration with families, problem resolution, relationships to other laws, response to hate and biased incidences involving students. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. School committee members-
That took a lot of time.
Yes, it did.
A lot of meetings.
Yes, it did. So school committee members, questions or comments? Um, Meredith?
So I have a couple of questions and one comment. So the, on the first page, and I, I am still trying to really fully understand the definition of bullying. So in the definition where it says, is the repeated use by one or more students?
Yes.
I wonder about, like, how many? How many is repeated? I just-
Repeated only means more than once. That's what repeated means. So if, if a student threw kids' books down and they were at the lunchroom table, or any kind of thing that you would identify as a bullying, I mean, the first time it happens, it's not considered a bullying incident. But it could be considered that if somebody wants, if, if the student wants to report it as that, if it happens more than once.
So I, I guess, and maybe this isn't the policy for, because I feel like there are incidents that happen more than once that could involve someone, I mean, you could define it as an aggressor and a target, but it's not defined as bullying and it's not treated as bullying. So I-
Do you have an example?
So for example, I know of a situation where there were, you know, cyberbullying. So there was multiple, you know, things that are happening on social media. There were, you know, words spoken in the hallway. There were things thrown in the outside area at certain, at a certain child. But it was taken care of with the administration, but it was never defined as bullying. Parents were involved, the kids were involved, the administration was involved. It was taken care of beautifully and solved and, and it, you know, the, the problem doesn't exist anymore, but it was never called bullying. So I just want to, I want to make sure that we're clear so that anyone that's reading the policy is very clear as to what we're, we mean by this.
Okay.
So the student who this is happening to may feel bullied, may not. Some families don't want to view it from that point of view. I'm sure Melissa could speak more about this. I worked with this area but several years ago. Melissa, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah. Melissa, if you can hear us, your video is frozen. So can you hear us? And if you can, just turn your mic on. And if you can't, it looks like we might be having a technical issue with Melissa. And Sharon, if you could turn your video on also, that would be great.
My, my what's not on?
Yeah, there you go. You're on. Your video is off.
Okay.
So we're going to try to get Melissa, if we can, in the interim. Terry?
A slight attempt at humor in a nigh on nine o'clock, and I have not read this thoroughly. But if I were on lunch duty or in the third grade and I, or recess duty or anywhere in a school setting, and a potential bully approached somebody and pushed that person down to the ground, does the bully have a second shot? Because if it's true, he's going to be in graduate school before he finally gets through this page. In other words, I guess what I'm saying to be simple, if there's one observed forgetting the definition, bullying of another student for the first time, I would expect the, the teaching assistant, the teacher or principal to interrupt the action and correct it. Follow what you want.
I, I can speak to that, Terry. So bullying doesn't mean every discipline problem. If somebody saves a seat and it's against the rules to not save a seat, if somebody does something one time that would fall under bullying, but it's one time, that doesn't mean it's not a discipline thing and doesn't mean it can't be dealt as a discipline issue. But students are taught, I don't know, Melissa would know better than I. I don't know exactly what grades they're taught this, but probably it's more than one grade where it's, you know, brought up. But the definition's very important because, yes, this kind of thing happens a lot. Maybe our statistics are extra good because people aren't aware. This is not harassment. That harassment is a different, higher level thing that often can involve legal things. But, but some kids try out bullying. They don't even know it's bullying necessarily. But you don't want it to develop into a pattern for the kids that do this type of thing. But also, as, as Meredith is bringing up, students that have an issue who have been bullied, if they don't realize this, they aren't aware of, to them, maybe just somebody's being mean to them a lot.
So Sharon, Melissa has joined us? I didn't know if you want to, yeah.
Oh, good, okay, that's fine, that's better.
So Melissa, go ahead.
So I, I, I want to clarify two things. One is conflict, where conflict happens and that's developmental. And quite frankly, it happens right into adulthood. So we have situations where students have conflict with one another. They may say things to each other that aren't nice, you know, they may do things that maybe aren't nice. That doesn't necessarily mean that's bullying. When you look at the criteria below that, that talks about causing physical or emotional harm, you know, destroys property, creates a hostile learning environment, disrupts the learning environment, all of these pieces, you have to be careful because it's very easy to say someone's bullying. And I, I think we have to be careful with that language too, because the minute somebody, a child does something to somebody else, somebody says they're bullying them. And we have to recognize and really assess, is this a situation where we need to really engage in, you know, teachable moments, use our social emotional learning, really develop those skills to understand and manage conflict? Right? It comes with self-awareness and self-management, good decision-making, social skills and social awareness. Those pieces are so critical developmentally that it's very easy to get off track by saying bullying's happening. So does conflict happen? Hundred percent it happens because that's developmental. It, it does happen until students learn the skills necessary to navigate those, those situations. The bullying piece is absolutely that when there's an imbalance of the person who is targeting somebody who, who is perceived to have greater power over that person that then is causing harm, physical, mental, whatever the case may be, that that rises to level of bullying. Okay? So we have to be careful that, that, and distinguish between those two things. So it, it's not so much a number, Meredith, it's, it's, it's the assessment of the situation and the ability to really, for the administrators, the teachers, to have a good understanding of what is happening between those two students. And if there's opportunity to, you know, to engage in those restorative practices, to really bring those kids together and do some mediation and really then develop those communication skills and social skills, we find a lot of kids that end up becoming friends. You know, they misunderstood one another. Their perception, you know, was, it was different than what the other student was conveying. So all these pieces are really critical to then determine what is then bullying. So it's not about even a number of times. It's the assessment of the situation. So I'm hoping that clarifies because I know that becomes really confusing. And a lot of the pieces that were put in to this policy is a result of their, their, the new guidance that actually came out last year to incorporate some of these additional pieces for clarification, especially around professional development, around how do we, you know, get to this policy about family involvement, and for parents to be well-educated and informed about bullying as well, so that it doesn't become a situation where, you know, your kid's bullying my kid. You know, we as a, as a, as a community need to understand what that is and understand the needs of our students and their learning needs to, to move them forward. So I hope that clarifies because it's really not about a number. It's about really analyzing the situation and determining whether or not it rises to this criteria of bullying. Does that make sense?
It does clarify. And I think that's kind of where I was, what I was thinking about is, is the overuse of bullying. You know, because like you said, you know, they're, like the example I gave, like I believe that was a, a conflict that may have happened multiple times between the same two kids, but through, you know, the reflective process and the help of administration and parents, it was resolved, even though you could kind of see where, so, so that helps. Yeah.
And that's why it's so important to have those communications with parents to really be able to understand the situation. Because you're right, Meredith, it could happen multiple times until the kids have, you know, begun to really apply the skills they're learning to manage conflict. You know, so you're right. I, I think the term is overused, unfortunately, because it's an easy term to, to say somebody's bullying someone. Very easy. And it's an emotional response. Nobody wants a child hurt or their feelings hurt or to feel bad about anything. Right? And that's why it's so critical that our social emotional learning framework is, is, you know, strong and we continue to strengthen that because that's where you're going to see the decrease in those, in those types of situations. Bullying is taught at all levels. As a matter of fact, we just even talked about at 11th and 12th grade where they don't get help, where usually where those bullying lessons are implemented. We're now implementing an online bullying curriculum for 11th and 12th grade, but there's also a parent portion of that. So as it stands going into next year, it will be pre-K through 12, where they will be receiving curriculum and instruction on bullying at every grade level.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Um, oh.
Oh, did you have another one?
I did.
No, go ahead.
Just, this is a quick one.
No, go ahead.
Um, on page two, where the target, the target is a student, is the staff, should the staff be there too? Or is that a, is there a separate policy in the staff handbook for staff?
The only, for, for staff, there, there is a separate harassment policy, which we did last year, I believe.
I just didn't know if they should be included in this one.
Separated out those two policies between sexual harassment and harassment. That's the adult to adult. This here is, is more specific to an adult towards a student. So the target would not be the adult in this policy. This is for students. But an adult can be potentially considered one who is bullying.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. And then just on page eight, a grammatical thing, under F, the numbered items. I think number six is part of number five.
Oh, yes. I noticed that.
Yep. I, I felt like Joe when I found that.
Got it, just fixed it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it.
It's fixed.
Thank you. Terry, you had a question, concern. Did you get an answer to that?
I think the answer lies within me. Uh, thank you, Melissa. I, I come from old school. I know it when I see it. I need to learn and read more into the nuances of bullying. What did he say?
Thank you. Uh, Joe, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I, and also thank you for pointing out how number five and six go together. I was really conflicted about mentioning that. I remember a school committee meeting about five years ago where Chairman DeVole insisted that the school committee members not wordsmith texts as they come up. And I am someone who's guilty of that and I, I heard his stern admonition and took it to heart. So I, I do, I will just try to limit it to a couple of points, two points really. On the first page, the third red paragraph we recognize, I would say that it struck me as what's called in contemporary parlance virtue signaling, that we are signaling our virtues and showing that we are nice folks and good folks. I think we can omit it because the concept or the idea there is covered repeatedly in the document, particularly sections three A and B, also section nine A and B. And to put it on page one is, you know, it's just unnecessary and, yeah, virtue signaling. I, I think it, I think it'll backfire for the committee rather than help. But I wouldn't, I, I don't think it'll be, it would be a big problem either way, but I would recommend removing it. On page two, I, I really applaud the addition of, or staff, under the bullying or retaliation, partly because it makes consistent with the definition of bullying that's on page one. So to have that consistency, the addition there adds to the consistency and the internal coherence of the, of the document. I wanted to get to page five, reporting by staff. I really thought that was a good requirement. It's a, it's an important thing, but certainly not what I am familiar with in my own experience and career. So I think that's a really important change. Finally, there's, there's some, there's something where I'm a little stuck. And it has, it, the issue I have is I don't think it's, it's clearly not bullying and it may not qualify as harassment. So I, I take you to page 11, the first full paragraph on the top in red. And it, it makes the distinction between bullying and harassment. So I, I read this very carefully. And I, I read it carefully because my own experience as a student is to have been attacked, assaulted, efforts of intimidation and humiliation in every school I ever attended. And it was always from the teachers directed at me. So let me think of a, I'm going to go back 50 years now. Very quickly to just set the stage, because this isn't cyberbullying, believe me. But I think it has contemporary issues or contemporary equivalent, so I want to raise it. So before school, um, I'm handing out anti-war leaflets for a demonstration at the Boston Comet. Bell rings, the first bell rings, time to come in. I pack up my stuff and I come in. My leafleting had been on town property, I wasn't on school property. So I come in, my teacher is very angry with me, he's furious, throws me against a locker, puts his forearm on my neck, screams in my face, having to do with my lack of respect for the armed forces and so forth and so on. It was physically painful to have a forty-something-year-old man, you know, pushing at me. This was certainly not reported. It was, you know, the department head came by and told him to stop and eventually he did, after a couple more shoves into the locker. And I went off to my class and just continued my day. Nothing, you know, nothing ever happened. It was clearly seen by, you know, thirty, forty people. But it's not bullying because bullying is any repeated behavior. You only do it once. And harassment is a single severe hate incident that may create an intimidating habit. I'm not sure if this was hate. You know, it, it was a, it was a single severe incident, but if hate is not included, does that make it harassment since hatred seems to be an element defining harassment? So where do you, what happens if, you know, maybe the equivalent isn't exact? If somebody is handing out flyers for a Black Lives Matter leaflet and a teacher or a white teacher assaults that kid, is that hate? Or, or maybe you can then say because it's a single severe hate incident, it's harassment. But in my case, you know, the teacher that was banging my head against the wall, uh, he was angry. I'm not sure I can peg hate on it. You know, uh, my family would, they would have said, well, the teacher was Irish, you're Italian, that's how the Irish have always treated us. But that's a whole nother issue. So, um, I guess, um, what, what happens to the single issue that is not race-related or hate-related or something else, even if it doesn't occur again? It doesn't seem to be harassment, it doesn't seem to be bullying. And, uh, you know, the, the events that occurred in all the other grades and all the other schools, in the interest of time, Terry pointed out that we're already way past nine o'clock. I will defer to that good judgment and I won't talk about all the other incidents that come up and just limit myself to this one.
Okay, Joe, I'm going, Melissa, I think wants, might want to respond to that. So I'll take her response and then Sharon, I see your hand, but Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think things have changed certainly drastically and policies or legislation, um, you know, is in place because of things like this. That doesn't fall under any, because that's an assault. One incident, that's an assault, you know, that's a civil offense, that's a criminal offense. So it doesn't even come to bullying, it's, it's automatically an assault. It, that's the same, you know, under statute for a student as well. I mean, that's why, you know, principals get to invoke thirty-seven H and a half and three-quarters and all of these that, that put people in harms way, you know, there, there's ways to address that. So that's why it's not there, because it isn't bullying. It's simply assault and it, it gets addressed legally, if that makes sense, Joe, so.
Yeah, so it's addressed in another, it's addressed in another file, not in this one?
Well, it's addressed in the law, so.
It's addressed in the law.
It's addressed in the law, so.
But not school law?
It's.
But not school policy?
Conduct, um, you know, what, what, what you go to.
Stop, go ahead, you, you speak.
What's that?
He, he's, he just wants you to speak, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. So, you know, anytime, of course, you've got your code of conduct. And then anytime there's, you know, an assault, you, you just go right to the law that, that, you know, and I have a grid that tells you all those, you know, thirty-sevens. And that's under the law which is, allows you to remove a student basically. And then what the process is for doing that? For weapons, for drugs, for, you know, assault. So it, that's, you're just following the law on that, as you would anywhere if somebody were to, you know, put their hands on you. So, you know, we do have that under our code of conduct that addresses that. But we don't spell out, you know, the law because we don't have to, because the law is the law. So we just follow it.
Thank you, Melissa. Sharon, did you have a comment?
Uh, Melissa handled that answer very well, but I will just expand a little bit that the beginning of what Melissa said is things have changed a lot. It's only because there were so many people that in Joe's time, my time, and, and more recent, that have had such horrible experiences that these changes have occurred. I, I ran a, before my bully prevention grant that I ran for a few years at Chatham Schools, I was in a workshop with parents and I asked them to raise their hand if they were ever bullied, ever were a bully or ever really were afraid because they witnessed bullying. So I'm not talking about this specific topic you're saying, but every single person in that room raised their hand, every single person. And I think that things have gotten better in general so that bystanders feel more, uh, and, and victims feel much more empowered because we have put things in schools. You know, as, as Meredith was saying, even whatever it was called or wasn't called, things got resolved and that's what I'm really looking to see. And, you know, I'm sure all of us are wanting to see that. And that's all.
Thank you, Sharon. So I just want to, um, highlight a couple of things on the timeline of this. And Melissa, please correct me i- if I'm misspeaking. But this policy has to be approved at some point by us so that Melissa can get it uploaded, um, to the state, I believe, by the end of June. Is that correct, Melissa? Okay, so looking at our school committee dates, because Terry said he needed, I think, a bit more time to read through this. So we could bring this back to the 29th for another first read, but we're going to run out of time if we do, unless you feel comfortable to move this to a second read. I'm not, I'm sorry, yeah, the second read. So I'm just going to put it out there for thoughts. Nancy, you're shaking, go ahead.
No, I didn't mean to shake, I'm just saying that I'm, I'm fine with it, I did review it.
Okay, all right, so you're fine with it. Is anybody not fine or need more time with this? Terry, are you good?
I am.
Okay. Uh, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I raised the issue of what I referred to as a case of virtue signaling on the first page and that the third paragraph in red be dropped. Looking at it again, I'm even more convinced it is. But in, in the interest of expediting a generally very good document and getting it adopted, you know, I would, without withdrawing the objection, just make it for the record and let's, um, let's call this the first reading and move forward so we can complete the tasks of this committee this year.
Okay. Superintendent, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think the committee, or something, they did a great job of putting it together. I, I do think there's, if I just reflect back on my years in dealing with bullying cases at, at the high school, I think one thing that, that, you know, that I, I, that I would say is consistent with some of the most challenging cases is that, is that oftentimes aggressors and targets are not mutually exclusive, where the aggressor is also the target and the target is the aggressor. And, and those, you know, those are the most challenging bullying situations to resolve. And I, and I, and I don't, I, I, you know, I, I think as long as you look at the policy and, and can take into consideration that, that it can go both ways. And often, oftentimes, I think, I think when, as we educate, have students become aware that something is being leaned to another, there at times is an interesting dynamic, particularly with older kids where there's backlash that starts to happen. And it gets really, um, challenging to untangle that.
Yes, exactly. All right, so with all that being said, is everybody okay with Joe's minor edits that this would return on May 29th for a second read? Nancy?
I, I think it's May 27th.
Oh, am I giving the wrong date? May, okay, May 27th is, oh, sorry, thank you. So May 27th is our next, I think I've said the 29th a few times, actually. All right, so May 27th, that's our next meeting. So is everyone, is anyone opposed to this coming back as a second read with Joe's edits? Say that again? All right, we're getting, hold on one second. We'll go ahead and grab it, um, we'll go ahead and grab it. So where is it, Cindy?
Third line down, the second from the right is a number one.
Oh, I see. Okay, so just take the one out. All right, so it's just a typo. So Melissa, it's just, um, page 11, it's actually in the, the law. So it's just the third line, there's a rank, kind of a floating number one hanging out there. That just needs, we'll just need to take that out, okay? All right, so we then will move this to a second read, okay? For the 27th. Oh, Melissa, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, just for clarification only, um, are you suggesting that we do in fact take out that paragraph that, on the first page? That, that was an advisory from the state. So I, I just want to clarify that that's being recommended to be deleted from page one?
Okay, thank you for that. Joe, can you speak to that, just to make sure that we heard you correctly?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have to have a big quarrel on it because my, my reason for suggesting we remove it was because as, as I said, we've covered it in at least four other places, including state language in this document already. It, um, I, I, I think it's a kind of concession to the, uh, woke folks that you're trying to show that you care about their concerns. And you should, and the document does. So to say, to say it here, as I said, I think we fall, we are becoming what in common parlance is called virtue signaling. We're signaling our virtues and we don't, um, it tends to backfire, I'd, I'd like to avoid it. But, and I, and I think we can and should because as I said, it's covered in four other places. Nobody is going to think that, uh, we are indifferent to bullying and harassment that occurs on the basis of race, status, homelessness, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, if, the fact that the state recommends it doesn't require that we have it. I'd like to see it omitted, but, you know, it's, it's not life or death if it's still there. I, I think it's a, not that big a matter.
Okay, so Melissa, I'm just going to ask you as the expert, the director of student services, that was an advisement from the state, may I ask for your expert opinion?
I, I, I think with how we're moving forward in, um, you know, through our equity task force and looking at all of our policies and procedures with a lens of anti-racism, which is really critical in this climate, that it became a statement to, to in fact demonstrate that, that is our, that is our stance, that we are taking action against any anti-racism activity or, um, or any, you know, anything within our policy. So that's why it was there and upfront. And I think everything we do moving forward needs to have that lens for, you know, for us to, to be in a better place in our community. So that, that's my recommendation, but again, it's at the will of certainly the committee. So I just want a clarification, um, before, because I have the policy up and I just want to make sure I fixed what needs to be fixed.
Thank you. And for, and Sharon, but for the record, um, the subcommittee did agree with Melissa's recommendation. So I'm glad that we're clarifying this. Sharon, did you want to say something, go ahead?
Um, I, I feel uncomfortable about making anything major like this change and still calling it a first reading for next time. That's the only thing I feel is that it's a second reading if we do something that's more than like a little typo or anything.
Okay, all right, so what's on, so right now, Joe has suggested to remove this paragraph, Melissa's expert opinion, which the sub, uh, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, it, you, you know, I, again, I, I would say it's worse than redundant. It's, it's highlighted several times, I think it should be omitted. But I don't want to interrupt the cycle of first and second readings. I'd really like to see this completed. So I want to make the objection, I want to make it for the record. Why don't we adopt it as is? I'm willing to do that, even if it has a flaw in it. Uh, this is, this is called working with a committee. Now I'm working with my colleagues on the school committee. We, we have a, a timeline, we need to get things done. And plus, if I am deferring on behalf of Melissa, I, I think that just puts me a little closer on the side of the angels and I'm willing to do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is going to come back as a second read on May 27th with the paragraph, all right? And then the other couple of edits that were proposed, all right? So that's where we're going to leave this and it will come back. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, superintendent's report.
I'll keep this under 45 minutes.
Let me start the timer.
Uh, just recognitions, uh, we'd like to thank Cape Cod Five for their bonus mini-grant to Larry Sosa in the amount of $100. To thank the Women's Club of Chatham for their grant in the amount of $500 to the Monmouth Regional High School Vision and Performing Arts Department. Lastly, we'd like to thank Wheelhouse Bikes in Chatham for donating repairs to two middle school intensive lead program tricycles. Uh, in terms of Harwich Town meeting that was this past Saturday on our football field, I was, uh, it was very nice to see that the town passed the Monmouth budget. I believe there was only one voice I heard that was a nay. And, uh, you know, the vast majority out there supported it. You know, and keep in mind, it is a budget, that's only a 0.7% increase on the budget, but it does have a roughly 2% increase in the assessment for, for Harwich. COVID update, uh, you know, the nice thing is that if you look at the trends of COVID on Cape Cod, that we continue to be tracking down and in a good direction. And we're a place right now in terms of the new infections that, you know, we haven't been this low since before February vacation. So we're, we're starting to go into a good place. A lot of that's because vaccinations are, are happening. As of today, we have over 180 of our high school students. You know, so that's, over a third of them have already had at least one, if not both vaccinations. And vaccinations were initially only available to 16-year-olds. Now they're available to, uh, to 16 and above, now it's available to 12 and above. 16 and above, now it's available to 12 and above. Next Thursday, we will be having a vaccination clinic at the high school from 8:30 to 10:30. So it's being done through Barnstable County, it will be Pfizer, we'll get the second dose June 11th. So, yeah, so we will do this, and I, you know, just, anytime I get an email saying, are you interested in supporting a vaccination clinic? And the answer is yes, let's set it up. In the end, I think, you know, we're all going to be at a place of having to make some decisions here as a committee and superintendent, working with our staff on what will next year look like. And the reality is, I suspect, that these are going to go away and we're going to start going back to normal if we get to that vaccination point where the vast majority of our students, our staff, and our communities vaccinated, and I think that's when we start to get back to normal. So, you know, I also want to emphasize that even though we are in a much better place when it comes to COVID, it's still very real. And I know that we have a family, a Monmouth family, that is, you know, that needs some prayers going their direction right now. So it is a real thing that is impacting families, and we're not through it. The last thing there, we'll have a conversation with the superintendent, another virtual one this Tuesday on May 18th, 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. There are links out there and we'll be publicizing it. The things that will, I'll address any and all questions, but things, you know, things I also want to make sure that we talk about is, you know, I'll share what I see in the tea leaves for next year. And again, it's like, how do we get back to normal? I, you know, there's, you know, there, the Commissioner of Education, the governor hasn't come out and said, this is what masks are going to be looking like at schools yet, but I, you know, but I can kind of share where I think things are going. We also will be talking about some updates that we did, working with the MREA, to revise some of our quarantine protocols. So we're going to be, for all future cases at the high school, particularly given that we've got so many individuals vaccinated, we're going to be shifting to CDC definition of close contacts and working with identifying who should be quarantined based on the CDC definition of, you know, where you're within six feet for more than 15 minutes. So, you know, so we'll start to shift away from entire classrooms being quarantined to having those who are nurses and teachers feel are at highest risk, given what, you know, what could be possible, you know, CDC-defined close contacts. We're also shifting from the, we've had a conservative 14-day quarantine. We'll be shifting at the high school level to follow the sort of revised CDC guidelines, which involve 10 days instead of 14 days, and, you know, and an option to come back at 7 if there's testing that has been involved. So, again, we're able to do that at the moment at the high school because there's sort of streaming and we can have kids, you know, sort of coming back at 14 days, or 10 days, or seven days. It doesn't have to be, you know, ASAP, coming back all at once. So, you know, so we'll be, we'll be, in many ways, you know, we'll be trying out a new approach, and I imagine that we'll be at a place, particularly with some of our younger grades, if the vaccine doesn't roll out to our younger children, that we may still have to be looking at, do we stream, and do we quarantine? Have we quarantined? What, you know, when are we masking, when are we not masking? So there's a lot that's still going to, I think, bubble up and become more clear over the next several months. The last thing that we want to go and talk about, I know Michael gave a presentation on the S Word funds that are going to be available to school districts, and, you know, I want to just sort of talk to parents and just see, you know, what ideas do they have? Where do they think the losses, the learning losses that they've seen with their children or the social-emotional challenges that they might have, and what do they want to see us put in place as we go into the next year and beyond? Because we have these monies, and one of the things that I want to do is just get some parent input on how we use those monies and bring that, you know, that input back to this group too.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Terry?
Questions, Scott, and I probably know the answer because vaccines within each home is a private decision, but when we bring children into school, ideally in September at all levels, is there a way in which the kids let us know that they're vaccinated and others don't so that, I don't know what you do with that information, but it certainly would be a nice tracing way to...
So, I think something, one thing that people might not fully understand is that vaccines are actually sort of part of a public record. So, you know, so when any of us get vaccinated, our vaccination actually gets reported to the Department of Health, and we have, our nurses have the ability to go look up. So what I'm saying, when I'm saying that we have, you know, over 180 students that have been vaccinated, that's because our nurses can go and pull our student list and see and know who has been vaccinated. So we, yes, we have that ability to know who's been vaccinated, who hasn't.
Good, good.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for the superintendent? All right, seeing none, we're moving into action items. The first two items have been taken care of already, which brings us to the presentation of the warrants. They have been presented, which moves us into adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? So moved. Thank you, Nancy. A second.
I would second it.
Terry has seconded, so we're going to go into the Zoom room, starting with Joe, motion to adjourn.
Joe Westy, aye to adjournment.
Thank you. Sharon?
Aye.
Thank you. Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, and we are officially adjourned at 9:47 p.m., and we will see you in two weeks on May 27th. Thank you.